Here he comes now, you can tell him where to stand.
Go outside. You know what, maybe...
Yeah, you'll be coming usually in the front and I'll go coordinate right now for Mayor.
And then we'll go outside.
Yeah, probably that aisle.
I think it'd be better that way. Hey, we've got the camp waiting. That was a great idea.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
Um, I've just talked to Heather, yeah, we'll do these together as we ordinarily do.
Mm-hmm.
To, um, you know, two ordinances, so we're gonna need two motions, two votes.
Right.
Eighteen and nineteen are related as well. They concern the same piece of property.
Right, but it's a different each.
We can take them together, it's up to you.
Let's do them separate, yeah.
Yeah, just like you would hear, but just like seventeen A and B, eighteen, nineteen will be the same presentation. It's probably easier. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, I've got stereo, stereo protection. Yeah.
How is Jake?
Yep. Yeah, okay.
All right, so, okay, we're gonna be, we're gonna go outside to present it, yeah. After I finish reading that.
I saw this, the new copy, the new copy this evening before I came here, because I'm not on my computer during the day, so.
I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand seventeen at six thirty P.M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuza's.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seaver.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Kurt Snare from Saint Timothy Lutheran Church, if you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
The Lord be with you. Heavenly Lord, we just thank you for being alive in your universe, we acknowledge your presence here with us now. We thank you for this city that you have given us, teach us to be good stewards. We thank you for our children, protect and watch over them. We thank you for our veterans, for our police officers, our firefighters and our EMTs, be with our first responders, we honor them before you. Lord, we also pray that you would be with our mayor and our commissioners, may you guide them with your wisdom, that you might be glorified here in this place. We ask all of this in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge of Allegion is the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good night, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting, thank you for being here tonight. This evening we have two special presentations. The first presentation is for the most popular weatherman of Channel Ten. Mr. Dennis Phillips, the Chief Meteorologist of ABC News. The plaque says, "The Outstanding Service Award Presented to Dennis Phillips For Passionate Devotion to Informing and Educating the Public on Weather Forecasting Through On-Air Audience and Social Media, City of Tarpon Springs, two thousand seventeen." We'd like to congratulate you and we'd like to thank you. We also have a key of the city that I will ask our vice mayor to present it to you. Go ahead and say it. Before we all go outside.
Oh, okay. Is that now?
Let's go, man.
I'll say two quick things. I had a chance to do the Tarpon Springs appearance, it was in there, it was probably about fifteen years ago, maybe one of them.
You got three, right?
Yeah.
And I remember, we were over the top of that, we were talking about it. And I remember, we, it's like we came out, why have you been so lucky? Why have you had almost none of this here, or, or there? And I remember, maybe the meteorologist, why have you been no idea what? And one, I went to the back, about, no, no, I don't know exactly why. Because, our experience, right?
I don't know.
And I still get goosebumps thinking about that, because so far it worked, and even though this was a very close call for, um, and everyone, I know that a lot of people have changed from television to social media, and getting most certainly, but I'll tell you one more quick story, this is, I think everybody in the firm remembers the fact started on the East Coast and then moved all over the country, right? But it was Thursday night or Friday. Whenever the track went from east to west, I'm sitting, I have a computer at home at two o'clock in the morning, and I have a picture video, and I'm very good, and by the way, whether you've been to the big hall, at thirteen, at nine, at four, five, come, bring people, and help with it, and other stuff, and we're all, two A.M., the new hurricane model comes out, and shoot at that track, from the East Coast of Florida, right over, and it's three hours for the hurricane to kind of update their track. My face was painted open, and all the guys messaging me, I kept looking at it, and I'm thinking to myself, oh my God. And twenty seconds later, I see a message from all the guys, oh my God. We both at the exact same time are looking at this track, we really thought that this storm, and maybe, this was a regret. But I'll tell you, the one thing that we learned, and I hope that you guys, no matter where you're getting weather information from, I think the vital lesson is, people who are watching the weather channel, people who are watching that, they didn't need, our, our community, we didn't need any help means here, we already worked. So we didn't need to hear worst case scenario, we didn't need to hear how bad it was going to be, because I think everybody knew how bad it could be. What we tried to do, and I think what everybody does try to do as well, is let's remind people, you know what? Sometimes hurricanes can change fast, very often they can happen in three days, because the line is right on top of you. Oh, sorry, mine might be on top of you in three days, because that's the way the track goes. So, we hope that we were at least a little bit helpful in getting through the storm, whether it's social media or on TV, and I hope that we could continue to do this for years, and I see very high through the thunder and stuff, kind of, for five years, and, um, thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Again, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for keeping us informed, but also I want to thank you for the rule number seven, for keeping us calm. I think that was great. It was very important that you're doing that, we appreciate it. Thank you. Our next presentation goes to the, uh, it's an award of appreciation and it goes to Mark Goldfitter in recognition of your dedication in securing the Safe Grant for the City of Tarpon Springs, two thousand seventeen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I want to thank you for applying for this grant and providing us six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, and with that, we're able to add four more firemen into our force. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You can say something, you can say something if you like.
City Manager LaCurus, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, Chief Young. It's hard to believe that next month marks my thirteenth anniversary in service to the Tarpon Springs Fire Department Fire Rescue in the city. And in my career here, as well as elsewhere, it's always been my, my desire to advance the fire service, the safety of our firefighters, and give them opportunities to provide the service that we do to our citizens in the safest, most effective way possible, and so that everybody goes home at seven o'clock in the morning. This grant, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to file for this grant. The value that it will, the monetary value that it will provide to the city is nothing in the measure of service and safety it will increase to our firefighters and our ability to provide effective service for our citizens. So, thank you very much for this opportunity, and I look forward to further opportunities with the department. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to the commission comments on both presentations. Vice Mayor?
Yes, well, I know, I think Mr. Phillips left, but he's got me through many storms, I'm kind of a weather geek, so I know we all valued his input during the storm. I watched it in the E O C until the cable went out in the, in the, in the middle of the night, so, thank you to him again, we're lucky to have somebody like him in our, in our community and his love for Tarpon Springs as well. When, 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 when I've asked him to come to the Rotary Club to speak, he's always said yes. He said yes quickly to, to come here tonight, so we're, we're lucky that we have a weatherman that's so friendly to Tarpon Springs. As far as Mark goes, Mark, thank you so much for this. Um, we thought, I think I've been following the Safe Grant for almost two years, it seems like, could be longer. We thought it was all but dead, because, you know, we weren't as disadvantaged, if you will, as some surrounding fi- fire departments. And, uh, and when I heard the news that it, that it, that it came through, I was shocked. Uh, so I, 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 I want to thank you for, for your, your hard work. I know you, you have your plate full as it is with your fire service and your other jobs, and I know you do volunteer work, like you just got back from Puerto Rico, I believe, down there. So, um, it's not like you have a lot of free time on, 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 on your hands, so thank you for this, um, and what you did will literally save lives, because it allows us to hire more firefighters than we could otherwise. So I think it, it will have a long-lasting impact on Tarpon Springs, and I hope that you will lend your grant-writing skills to the city in the future, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta.
Oh, thank you. Um, Mark, I just, um, I, I can't express my gratitude for this, this grant, because, you know, it was, came at a perfect time, during budget time. And, you know, we, I know I got quite a few phone calls from, um, the union, and, you know, we need more people, and I think all of us understood, we understood that. I know the fire department needed more people, and we just weren't sure where we were going to get the money from to hire anybody, so this grant came at a perfect time for us, and I thank you so much. And, and another thing the union has said to me quite a few years ago is that we need a grant writer for the city, or at least for the fire department. So maybe we might have found, we may have found our grant writer here, I don't know, maybe we can add that to your job description, I'm not sure if you're willing to take it on, but again, thank you so much, and, and, you know, echo what Vice Mayor Banther says. You did save lives by, by, um, getting this grant for us, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Seaver?
Yes, Mark, I don't think you need another job, because I know how hard you work. Uh, of course, I agree with my colleagues, and, um, we, we didn't think we were going to get this grant, so I was shocked as well. And, um, thank you for, for your hard work for this, because we, we all know we needed more firefighters in the department, so appreciate your hard work, and you're an asset to our fire rescue department. Thank you.
The car.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just gonna echo whatever else is said. Thank you for your hard work, and thank you for filling out the paperwork to ask for this, because there's a lot of opportunities out there, we said to fill out, fill out the paperwork, and thank you for taking initiative to do that, so, thanks.
Thank you. We're now going to public comments on both presentations.
David Bolton, five oh eight North Gross Avenue, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I just have a quick question, maybe you covered this, because I was, I missed roll call. In the CRA meeting coming up, I don't see public comment on that. I mean, will there be a time for public comment at that meeting?
Public comment.
At that, at that time?
At that time.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure to, I didn't miss if I needed to have those comments now. Thank you.
Good evening, and just to clarify the mayor's comments, this public comment is on the presentations, because I do wish to speak during open public comments. What I would like to say, uh, to follow up on what Mr. Phillips had said, uh, with regards to our local meteorologists. We're very lucky to have the talent that we have in the Tampa Bay area between all the stations. I started watching Irma and Maria right off the coast of Africa, when Brian McClure on Nine said, "This is something we gotta watch," and it reminded me of Andrew. But, the point I want to bring out on this regard, these meteorologists, in order to provide us all this information, rely on data. Scientific data. Data that the hurricane hunters out of Lakeland go up to search through the hurricanes for, and all these computer models. And the point I want to bring out is, we rely heavily on this information. And yet, our current administration, first off, is trying to cut NOAA's funding budgets, which provide for these resources that are vital to us. So I just want to make you aware of this, because if they have to get rid of some of the hurricane hunters, or they don't provide the data, then we are at risk for this aspect. And secondly, if you did watch any of the storms, Harvey, Irma, Maria, whether it was CNN, the Weather Channel, or any of these meteorologists, all of them undeniably say climate change is a factor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Here none. And we are now going to the, uh, public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any, uh, comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record.
Peter Lacks, five one four Ashland Avenue. I want to bring up a, a local issue, which regards to Mr. Banther and the board's involvement with PSTA. My mechanic's in Palm Harbor. I'll drop the car off, I'll pick up a bus or something to come back, and such of that nature. Now, it's interesting, on alternate nineteen, the sixty-six bus doesn't run during the day, doesn't start till like three fifty, and it relies on the trolley during the day. And I had an interesting experience, when I ride on the PSTA bus, you put the money into the box, you can get a little ticket. You know, on the trolley, there's a thing there, and I went to go put, no, and the lady says, "No, that's for PSTA." I have to give her the cash, two and a quarter. Do I get a ticket? Nope, no ticket. And my concern here isn't so much for me, but knowing what we do as a city to sponsor Jolly Trolley, and rely on that as a means of transportation, part of that comes accountability. So how do we know at the end of that run, and not to imply anybody is doing anything illegal, but there's no accountability on what funds were received on that trip? How many, how many people did you actually get? Is it a hand clicker? So, I just wanted to point that out as something that maybe y'all might want to take a look at and see why there's no mechanism for revenue accountability. Now. Father Tim's gone, I guess. I went to, uh, the Episcopal Church up here on Keystone on Sunday. I'm not Episcopal, but I have, you know, a friend wanted to go, and it's a beautiful church, I'd never been there, it was built like in eighteen ninety-two, it's like a New England church. And it's beautiful inside, all the stained glass and the light was coming in, and people wore hymns, and I was thinking, God, this is so peaceful, and people coming together. And then I started thinking about how people are in mosques or temples or stuff, and they're praying, and then all of a sudden a bomb goes off, and I said, oh, that's so horrible. And then we left church, and we went to breakfast, and then you come home, and you turn on the news, and some other idiot who has access to guns has done another terrible thing to us. Stephen Colbert, last night, said something that was impactful. "We cannot just numb ourselves to this and become powerless. We must speak out and have our representatives begin to do something more than just saying, 'I'm sorry, it happened.'" Because those people in Texas never thought it was gonna happen to them either. God bless, amen.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Here none. Thank you. Next is Proclamations, one A, Veterans Day. City of Tarpon Springs proclamation. Whereas on Veterans Day, we pay tribute to the service and sacrifice of the men and women who in defense of our freedom have bravely worn the uniform of the United States. And whereas American veterans answered the call when asked to protect our nation and stood tall in the face of great danger, and enabled our nation to become the greatest force in, for freedom in the human history. Members, members of the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Corps Guard who have answered a high calling to serve and help secure America in every turn. Whereas our country is forever indebted to our veterans for their courage and service. And whereas we also remember honor those who'd lay down their lives for freedom, these brave men and women made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefit. And whereas on Veterans Day, we'll remember those heroes for their loyalty and dedication. Now therefore, I, Chris Alahuza, by virtue of authority vested in me, as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, hereby proclaim November eleventh, two thousand seventeen, as Veterans Day. And this will be mailed. Are any commission comments? On, uh, November eleventh, at eleven thirty, we will have the Veterans Day Ceremony at Craig Park. Following the ceremony, the Ox Club will have a barbecue for everyone, and everyone is welcome to come to the, uh, Craig Park. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Thank you. One B is a proclamation that Commissioner Kikta is going to ring on Pancreatic Cancer Day.
Thank you. Proclamation, whereas in two thousand seventeen, an estimated fifty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, and forty-three thousand, ninety will die from this disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer surpassed breast cancer last year to become the third-leading cause of cancer death in the United States. And it is projected to become the second-leading cause by two thousand twenty. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages, and seventy-one percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of the diagnosis. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of the City of Tarpon Springs are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes and effective treatments. And whereas on World Pancreatic Cancer Day, people around the world will unite to demand better in the fight against the world's toughest cancer. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Susan Kikta, by the virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim November sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day. And I believe we have some people here that would like to accept this. We have Suzie and Perry, Gary and Karen, Joanne and Tammy. And if you'd like to stand, say a few words at the podium as well, I'd like to present.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, we're thankful that you have proclaimed November sixteenth as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in Tarpon Springs. On behalf of the Tampa Bay affiliate of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, we thank you for that. We are all volunteers for the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. It's the leading national organization in providing research and hope for patients, and we do appreciate that. Each of us have been touched in some way by pancreatic cancer, and that's why we volunteer. Suzie is a survivor of pancreatic cancer. Those of us who do volunteer have had someone who has had pancreatic cancer, or knows someone who has had it. There is hope. The statistics that you read, Commissioner, are pretty dire. It is the only major cancer with a five-year survival rate, still in the single digits, at nine percent. I'm grateful that as of November eighteenth of this month, I will, I will be an eight-year pancreatic cancer survivor. But for every one of me, there's ninety-one who don't survive. So thank you for bringing this awareness to the community of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commission comment? Here none. Any public comments on this item? Here none. Thank you very much. We are now going to the concerned agenda. Number two is satisfaction and release of liens. Number three is the attorney fees invoice, eleven fifty-seven and eleven fifty-eight. Number four is the special events. A, there is no place like Tarpon Springs, December first, two thousand seventeen. B is the Holiday Boat Parade on December first, two thousand seventeen. C is the Christmas Parade, December ninth, two thousand seventeen. D is Boys and Girls Club, five K toy run, December tenth. Number five is to ratify the agreement with the Suncoast Police Benevolent Association, and number six is to approve the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen School Resource Officers Contract with Pinellas County School Board. Number seven is to authorize execution of First Amendment to the interlocal agreement between Pinellas County and N P D E S M S four, Comprimers for Water Quality and Biological Monitoring. Number eight is to approve renewal of the file number one six zero zero one seven dash C dash R S, liquid carbon dioxide through Sarasota County, contract number one five three one two six zero one zero zero. Number nine is to increase file number one seven zero zero seven three dash and dash J J, single source purchase of legal and promotional advertising. Number ten is award file number one eight zero zero thirty-two dash and dash C M, single source purchase of Chevrolet, G M original equipment manufacturer. Single Source Purchase of Chevrolet GM Original Equipment Manufacturer Parts and Services. Number 11 is extend file number 150063-C-JJ Maintenance Repair and Operating Suppliers to Florida State Contract. The number is 450-000-11-ACS. Number 12 is the award file, 180029-B-CM Brick Pavers Clay Reclaim. And number 13 is to approve file number 180040-N-CM Single Source Purchase of Caterpillar Original Equipment Manufacturer Parts and Services. And the last one, number 14, is the award file number 180041-C-CM Security Officer State of Florida Contract. The number is 92121500-1401. Any of the items that you'd like to pull?
Number five, I just want clarification on.
Do you want to pull it or you just want to ask a question?
I've got a question.
Okay.
Got the packet that came in today, like after lunch, I think. Is the summary cover everything? I don't know if I'm talking to Mark or the chief here. It's for the, um, for the police agreement between the city?
That summary is all the changes.
That covered all the changes. Okay. Because when I got this, I'm like, I can't read through this in the next two hours, so.
But yeah, it was left out. And again, it was a very good negotiation with the police. As you can see, both them and the fire, the last two, three-year contracts have been great product, great contracts. They're just a little bit salivating, a few other things. So it really came out to that one page where you see the changes in the full. We want to make sure you had the full one to see where these are in there. But these are the entire changes that you'll be voting on for the three-year contract.
Okay. I've got a couple of other comments on some other numbers, too. Is it? Okay. Number four, the mayor talked about special events that are going on in the city coming up in December. And I think it's a great thing for our city to see all the different holiday and Christmas events that are going on. So I love the fact that we have a boat parade and we have a Christmas parade. And that just says a lot about our community, I think, to see the community out because it's a great event every year. And then secondly, also pertaining to the historic district and the historic part of Tarpon Springs, I'm encouraged to see, too, that the brick pavers are going to be replaced along, I believe it's Ring or next to the parking lot, although it has a nice, pretty penny to it. But it's still is going to keep a lot of the character and the charm that Tarpon Springs has. So thanks for writing that in.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are there any public comments on this item? You're none? I need a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes. We're now going to the item number 15, which is the ordinance 2017-30. That's the application 17-108. Establish a temporary moratorium on wireless communications facility. This is a second reading. City Attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance 2017-30, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, establishing a temporary moratorium on the submittal and processing of any application and issuance of any permit for location of any wireless communication facilities, towers, or antennas in the city's right-of-way for a period of 120 days, providing for conflict severability, construction, and publication, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance 2017-30, second reading by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on October 27, 2017.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? You're none? Any commission comments?
Nothing has changed since first reading, so.
Call information.
Unless you have any questions.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes. Item number 16 is the ordinance 2017-25, the application 1793, Land Use Amendment from Residential Urban to Residential Low Medium Tarpon Springs Housing Authority at 721 Mango Circle. This is a second reading. City Attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance 2017-25, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for approximately 9.45 acres of property located at 721 Mango Circle at 1793 from RE Residential Urban to RLM Residential Low Medium, providing for findings and providing an effective date. Second reading of ordinance 2017-25 by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on October 20 and November 1, 2017.
There has been no change since this, since first reading. Again, this is for a grant application. They're looking to change the land use so that they can add 10 additional units and hopefully get funded this round of the grants for formal housing. With that, if there's anything else, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? You're, any commission comment? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes. The next is item 17A and 17B. I will be, will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. Item number 17A is the application 1795, Rainville Property, northwest corner of Rainville Road in alternate years 19. Ordinance 2017-28, Land Use Amendment from Residential Low Medium to Industrial Limited. And this is the first reading. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, this item is, as you know, quasi-adjudicial. Number 17B, 2017-29 is legislative. They'll be presented together by staff. We have a number of matters tonight that are quasi-adjudicial. Number 17A, number 18, which is ordinance 2017-27. Or number 19, ordinance 2017-33. Item 20, which is Resolution 2017-35. And item 21, which is Resolution 2017-36, are quasi-adjudicial. So I will, for the benefit of the commission and audience, explain the quasi-adjudicial procedures one time. They are applicable to all the procedures tonight. So at the appropriate time, if you intend to offer testimony, I'm going to ask you to please stand and be sworn. The identified proceedings are quasi-adjudicial proceedings. A quasi-adjudicial proceeding is one where the commission acts in a quasi-adjudicial rather than a legislative capacity. At such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In such a hearing, the commission is required to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings to previously established criteria contained in the city's code in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The commission may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established by the code, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established, then the commission is required to find against the applicant. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence. The applicant will then present its testimony to witnesses. There will be an opportunity to cross-examine witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have the opportunity to present. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which staff will have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions. A motion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this time, I'd ask any witnesses who intend to testify on the items I have described, 17A, 18, 19, 20, and 21, to please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you will give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. So item 17A is ordinance 2017-28, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for approximately 9.27 acres of property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Rainville Road and North Pinellas Avenue at 1795, from RLM Residential Low Medium to IL Industrial Limited, providing for findings and providing an effective date. It's first reading of ordinance 2017-28 by title only. Second reading to be held after review by Pinellas County. Ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on September 29, 2017. Item 17B is ordinance 2017-29, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida for approximately 9.27 acres of property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Rainville Road and North Pinellas Ave at 1795 from RPD 10 Residential Plan Development to IR Industrial Restricted, providing for findings and providing an effective date. It's first reading of ordinance 2017-29 by title only. Second reading to be held after review by Pinellas County. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on September 29, 2017. At this time, I'd ask for the board to please disclose any ex parte communications on this application or any other of the quasi-adjudicial proceedings this evening. Seeing none, we will turn it to Ms. Irwiler.
Thank you. With this, again, this is a 9.27 acre parcel of land off of Rainville Road. And essentially, it was rezoned in the past to residential. Nothing has matriculated on that property for that residential zoning. So the current owner would like to actually go back to the original zoning, which was IL and Industrial Limited and Industrial Restricted for the zoning. So essentially, that's what we're here tonight to discuss, is they, they're looking to eventually develop something on here that is definitely clearly listed as IL use in the industrial restrictive zoning district that's allowed use at the bridge painting company or something to that ilk, where it is very consistent with what had previously been on that property. It's consistent with what the county's vision is for that portion north of the river and also the neighborhood around there. Now, there have been some uses that have grown up around that area that are contrary to the majority of the uses, which is industrial restrictive. And that's, there are several churches in the area. With that, staff, again, has looked at this. And because we're returning to what was previously zoned and it gets consistent with the county-wide land use, staff has very little concern with the change from the residential to this industrial criteria. So literally just going to go through the criteria very quickly. The amendment is consistent with our goals, objectives, and policies of our Tarpon Springs Comprehensive Plan. The available property is appropriate for the particular uses compatible with the existing and planned uses for the area. Again, this is the IR and the industrial limited area. So this is not heavy industrial. This is limited industrial type uses. The amendment shall provide for effective and orderly development. It will, the subject property in the area is consistent with the existing and the planned industrial uses in the area. We can serve the water and sewer and provide all of the other concurrency requirements for this area, for the development of this property. And with that, the technical review team heard this application on September 21st. They are recommending approval and they had very limited concerns with the change going back. So with that, staff is recommending future land use change from residential low medium to residential, sorry, industrial limited with the zoning change from the residential plan development with a density of 10 to the industrial restricted. The Planning and Zoning Board heard this application on October 16th and after some limited discussion, recommended to approve this with the staff's recommendation. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. As you stated, that was industrial and we changed it to residential. Now we'll go back to industrial.
Correct.
Do we, and do we know, how many jobs are actually going to create by going to the industrial?
Because we don't actually have the property in here for a site plan at this point. I don't know what size building they're going to be proposing or any of that type of, or any of the particulars on exactly how many jobs that they will be bringing to the area. The applicant is here tonight. He may be able to speak to that information, but I don't have that information readily available.
Be nice if he does. Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to present this evening?
Good evening. For the record, my name's Robert Pergolisi. I'm a professional planner with Gulf Coast Consulting, 13825 Icott Boulevard, Suite 605 in Clearwater. Heather's made a presentation. I don't wish to duplicate that. I'm here to answer any questions you have. And Mr. Mayor, your question, I don't have an exact answer to that, to that question. It is Southern Road and Bridge, which is a local business that they want to, they want to be able to move here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Periodal Act 514, Ashland Avenue. I'm not so much to speak against or for the app, for the application. That'll be up to y'all to decide. I just want to point out a couple of things that I was briefly able to surmise from staff's information they've provided to us. On page four, under analysis, under one, it says, "The proposed IR zoning designation is consistent with the proposed IL future land use category." So let's not be deceived. Yes, it would be consistent with what's proposed, but it's not consistent with what it is now. So let's make sure we're aware of that fact. On page five in the analysis, it says, "The subject property is constrained by wetlands, which would limit the maximum developmental potential of this site as industrial." Page eight, take a look at the picture. Either a big lake, pond, or sinkhole there in the middle, which will constrain the property. Now, I do recall when this came before us, I was on the board years ago at the time that this was coming before us. And there is a lot of constriction as far as swift mud and wetland jurisdiction lines and a lot of things that would not be looked at until the site plan. So the thing I'm going to bring to you is y'all know where this property is. And I don't agree, don't disagree. We don't need industrial and jobs for that. And we have a lot of area out on Rainville Road, Anklote Road. Now that L and R Industrial has been completed, we've creased our access out there. So what I have to look to you, and I have to maybe get again a clarification from the attorney, because he said 17A was quasi, and I believe the zoning is the quasi and the future land use is legislative, which is 17A. So you do have the ability, in your vision of what you want for Tarpon Springs, to see and decide what you want as that to be a vision of that area of Tarpon Springs. You do have to remember, it's just north of the bridge on Anklote. So it is a gateway area, even though it's somewhat neglected. So when you go to look at jumping back and forth between IL and IR and residential, we've had developers come to us and say this is what they're going to do. Then we go back and change it, look at Jasmine with Lindiakas. How many times y'all have changed that? So again, as I've said before, you can't go by developers' promises of what to do. You have to look at what your vision of the city in that area is. Make that decision on the land use. If you decide you don't want to change the land use, you'd rather have somebody come and maybe do a development that's residential or some kind of mixed use. That's your vision. So just remember, it's not consistent now, not until you change the land use. Then everything becomes consistent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me clarify that. I think Mr., I believe Mr. Delacour says correct, 17B is quasi. It's all wrapped in one. No, I appreciate that. Are there any, any additional citizens wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Again, without characterizing Mr. Delacour's comments. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in support of the application? Does the applicant wish to make a closing statement or summary?
Be real brief. Robert Pergolisi, for the record, again. This site had historically had the industrial limited land use. It was changed about, I think in 2004, 2005 during the townhome craze. And now the applicant is seeking to change it back to its original industrial. The site is in a hurricane evacuation zone A, and it's in a 100-year flood plain. So it's really not suitable for residential development. And industrial development would be more suitable at that location. Thank you.
Does staff wish to make a closing statement or summary?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Are there any additional commission comments? Yes.
I just want to come-
I just want to comment on Mr. Delacose's comments. He's not here. Why, I, you know, I understand what he's saying, because there's some properties we did go back and forth with for years and keep changing the land use and stuff, but I honestly feel that this is the best land, the best use for this property out where it's located, it's out, and it could be considered a gateway to the community, but I'm not sure that's, I just honestly think that this is the best use for this property at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? No. The chair will detain the motion for seventeen A.
Second.
The roll call, please.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Kikka?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes. Now I need a motion for seventeen B.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Kikka?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Next item is eighteen, the ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven, the application seventeen eighty-six, to vacate the right-of-way Tarpin Turtle Annex. This is the first reading, this is also quasi judicial. Item number nineteen is related, so we're going to discuss both at the same time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the staff will do one presentation on the two ordinances as they concern the same subject and property. So the first is ordinance twenty seventeen dash twenty-seven, an ordinance of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning rights-of-way for one thousand two hundred and eighty-two point nine square feet of Alley A, lying north of lots twenty-four to twenty-six of Lakeview Subdivision, and one thousand three hundred and fourteen point seven square feet of Alley B, lying east of lots twenty to twenty-two of Lakeview Subdivision. Providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance twenty seventeen dash twenty-seven by title only. Second reading will be held on November fourteen, twenty-seventeen. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November three, twenty-seventeen. Ordinance twenty seventeen dash thirty-three, an ordinance of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning rights-of-way for one thousand six hundred and twenty-nine square feet of an unnamed alley, lying east of lots seventeen to nineteen of Lakeview Subdivision, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. First reading of ordinance twenty seventeen dash thirty-three by title only, second reading to be held on November fourteen, twenty-seventeen. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title on November three, twenty-seventeen.
All right. Good evening. This is the next phase in the Tarpin Turtle Annex that came before you for a land use change that's currently working its way through. Forward, Pinellas hopefully will be back before you for second reading in the very short order. With that, when we talked about that application, we talked about the fact that they had some alleyways that are kind of adjacent to those parcels in the existing development that's on the corner of Lake Tarpin Ave and Keystone Road. So as a result of those existing alleyways, they would have some difficulty with getting their parking lots to line up together, and that's how they're going to take access to that new building. So really, what's we're requesting here is to provide that additional access point where we would allow for the vacation of the alleyway that's basically between the existing site and the proposed site on lot twenty through twenty-one, or twenty-two. That's going to be coming forward eventually for site plan approval once the land use change hopefully is approved. With that, there's also an additional alley that runs, or used to run, from Lake Tarpin Avenue all the way to Myers Lane. As part of this vacation, they've also asked for that to be closed. Staff is actually in favor of that, because it's no longer, the alleyway no longer connects between both roadways, so having commercial traffic go down a ten-foot wide alleyway is not ideal. It would be better for any type of traffic that's going to be utilizing this site to be used line the parking lot cross-access. So with that, staff has not only included what the applicant has requested, but also a portion that goes right out to Myers Lane, the last little bit of the alleyway. As part of the city's responsibility, we're looking to vacate that entire portion. So now the entire alleyway will be closed at this point. There has been one update on the staff report, essentially under the valuation of the right-of-way. When we originally did the evaluation, we forgot to take into account that they had provided a easement for us, because we actually have a water line in one of the alleyways, so we have secured an easement so that we can maintain that water line or wastewater line into perpetuity. So as a result, that kind of comes off the valuation when we look at how it's evaluated. So the new fee that they're actually going to provide to the city will be two thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents for the actual valuation for the property. And with that, I can answer any questions that you might have on this.
Thank you. Are there any utilities on the alleys?
The only utilities that are on the alleys are our existing wastewater or water line that we have secured an easement for. All of the other utility providers provided no objection letters.
The power lines aren't on Main Street.
Correct.
I've got a question. Lot sixteen is just to the east of this alley. Did they have the right to come in and ask for the vacating this as well, or is it just, how does it, can you explain to me?
Sure. The vacation, generally, anybody can make the petition, and we usually notify both property owners on either side. They're notified as part of the application, so if they choose to sign on to the application, but we don't actually require it in this particular jurisdiction. It is required in other jurisdictions that both people participate, but in this jurisdiction, we don't require both sides to participate. They essentially will end up getting that adjacent alleyway that's adjacent to theirs as part of the vacation process.
Okay, but then we had the value of eleven thousand of the property, but then, since there's an easement, somehow, it was decided that was nine thousand dollars worth?
Well, correct. Two things happened. One, we forgot to take off the half of the fact that there's only, they're only getting half of the Alley A, the other adjacent alley, so that's been corrected. And then the other, the other issue is the fact that we're taking the full ten-foot easement from them, so we essentially don't lose any of the access to that right-of-way. It would just be the general public would not be able to traverse that particular alleyway.
Okay, thank you.
Does the applicant wish to present this evening? Anybody? I'm seeing sort of maybe.
Todd Pressman, three three four Eastlake Road, number one or two in Palm Harbor, Florida. I'm here with Terry Hunt. The staff report reads very, very well, brings all the points out quite well, and really, we couldn't make a better presentation than your report before you.
Questions, Mr. Pressman? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the applications?
My name is Dale Warner, and I live, I own the property at fourteen ten Meyer Lane, which is lots fifteen and sixteen, adjacent to the alleyway in seventeen dash one oh five. I wish to inform the board that as of November first, in a hearing in Judge Minkoff's office or court at Pinellas County Circuit, that the City of Tarpin Springs and myself are named as third-party defendants in a lawsuit regarding the meets and bounds of this property, the plaintiff being Gene Yololo, who owns the property immediately to the west of this alleyway, who is suing the developer Beach at all. Beach is asserting that there is an overlap or an impingement in the meets and bounds of this property, of the alleyway and the, in my property, and Yololo is claiming that the legal description of the property is sold to him by Beach was defective and is inconsistent with the other documentation available to them.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any members of the public, other members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the applications? Any members of the public wishing to speak in support?
My name is Edmund Colby Munger, and I live at fourteen sixty-five Meyer Lane. Whether I got up in support or in protest is still up in the air. We didn't receive any of the notifications, I got a copy of that forty-five minutes ago. My only concern, and possibly some of the rest of us that live on Meyer Lane, is that that's a very residential street, and there's a discussion here about building commercial property, and it looks like it's coming in the direction of the back of the lots on Meyer Lane. I just want to make the point that, you know, I eat at the Tarpin Turtle, they've been good neighbors. When it starts coming over and begins to impact a residential street by moving commercial building or commercial parking lots in that direction, I just want to say that I will want to go down to the City Hall and look at zoning, and make sure that, that traffic and other things that are also happening, that this, that this change could possibly allow is under consideration. Thank you.
Are there any other folks wishing to speak in support of the application? Just speak about the applications, we'll be fine.
I'm Linda Wexler, and I live at fourteen, fourteen sixty-five Meyer Lane, and I wasn't expecting to speak either, and we did not get a notification, but we live on a street that's totally residential, and we really don't want commercial traffic on the street. So if that is part of this, it will change the complexion of our neighborhood, and we'd really like to know that. And we weren't given any notification until just literally within an hour of the meeting by one of our neighbors. So we'd really like to know what, what our commission has in store for our neighborhood. It is totally residential now, and, you know, extending a commercial building to our area and more traffic is not in all of our best interest. Thank you.
My name is Dean Fegner, I live on fourteen forty-nine Meyer Lane. There's this property, and he mentioned it, it's the third lot, I think it's the second lot where he built this home, and it's sitting there for three and a half years, and I'm kind of ashamed living there, because I'm amazed that nothing happened yet, and I'm sure there was a lawsuit, lawsuit going back and forth, and I just want to know, this alley they want to get rid of now, does it affect the easement or the position of the home, and they can finish this building or tear it down and get rid of it, so we can, you know, have a beautiful road again? And, yeah, my concern is too, with all this changes on Tarpin Road to the Tarpin Turtle, now we have all this residential property is going to commercial, and it's going to be parking lots, that's fine. I don't want that it happens that these two last properties get bought off too, and then continue building more office building, and I just want to prevent that, you know, I want to keep our road residential. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak on the applications?
Torrance Hunt, nineteen fifty-five North Island Avenue, Tarpin Springs. I'm the owner of the proposed alley vacations, and I think there's people in the audience here that don't understand, we're vacating any access commercially, neighborhood-wise, to Meyer Lane, when, if y'all would vote to vacate these alleys, there's no access commercially, neighborhood-wise, to Meyer Lane whatsoever. So as we're going through our zoning processes that we've got through, the City of Tarpin Springs and Pinellas County land use, we're ready to have our final hearing here, November twenty-eighth. So their access for commercial anything to Meyer Lane, if you would vote to eliminate these alleys, is totally one hundred percent done away with, and I'm not sure that they understand this correctly, that it just goes away. I think Heather did a great job of explaining, if we get rid of the alleys that kind of run from the north-south side of our property to the north side of Meyer Lane, the vacation of that simply eliminates anything that anybody's ever come up to this and spoke tonight. So that's what we're proposing to do, is eliminate any access whatsoever. Can I give you any more answers to this? Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to make a closing statement or summary?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the first speaker who indicated that there was some type of conflict or that this vacating would affect them, it's our understanding, it will not. He's located otherwise in a non-impacted, non-associated position. The following speakers were speaking about a commercial use, of which the use here will be office, and as you're well aware, is not in front of you this evening. So I'm sorry the folks are coming down, not sure what the issues are, but quite frankly, that's the clarification for you, and I'm sure Heather can communicate that to you as well. Thank you.
Does staff wish to make a closing statement or summary?
Not at this time, but I can answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, thank you. Heather, I'd like to ask you again, just for clarification, what is the current zoning right now, even though that we're not here to discuss the zoning?
The current zoning...
We're going to discuss only vacating the alleys.
Correct. The current zoning on the property is in transition, it's going from our existing residential lots zoning to a RO or residential office use. Under the countywide rules, it's going to be very restricted, because you will be putting a restrictive covenant that's consistent with the countywide rules on that property at the time that we do the final hearing for the zoning. So that's what's happening with the zoning. If you choose to close this, these two alleyways, there will be no commercial traffic, that's the intention, is to remove the whole commercial traffic from Myers Lane or any of the other additional residential neighborhoods that are there. Their traffic will come in through Lake Tarpin Avenue and transition within the parking lots of the existing office buildings and the proposed office buildings. So there will be no commercial traffic coming into the Myers Lane neighborhood.
Thank you. The other question that I have is, one of the residents says he was not notified.
Notification is two hundred feet from the, from the actual alleyway, because we're not looking at the actual lots, we're looking at the actual alleyway in between. It's limited who's going to actually get noticed in those situations.
Was there any sign placed in there?
There's no sign required for the right-of-way notification, there was a sign placed out for the land use amendment, which probably just needs to be updated now that with Irma, the county kind of extended their land use timeframe for that, and they are finishing up their time at the county. We'll be putting out a new posting right before your, it's listed for your hearing, and there'll be a new ad in the newspaper, which is our standard practice here.
Thank you. Hold on, hang on. Back to me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any commission comments, question?
Just real quick. So Ms. Heather, so if we approve this tonight, and we vacate this, say Mr. Hunt sells all his property in five years, and somebody else comes in there, there is no way that person could then reclaim the use of that alleyway and add traffic to it, correct?
Not if those, not if those easements have been vacated.
And say we don't do that tonight, Mr. Hunt sells his property in five years, and some business comes in that's undesirable, and they want to run traffic through there, would they have the ability to try and make that happen?
If those, if those alleyways exist, they can be used by the public.
So, so if, so it would assume to me, if I was living on Meyer Lane or any potential area that was like that, I would feel more protected if we vacated that area, because that would prevent Mr. Hunt and any future landowners from using that to access their road, correct?
Agreed.
Thank you.
I just have a question. Do we have a site plan yet for this office building, or where it's going to be, or... Do we have a site plan yet for this office building, or where it's going to be, or do we know where it's going to be?
Not at this time, because they're still trying to finish the land use.
Thank you, Mr. Carr, you have a question?
Sure. During public comment, someone referenced a lawsuit that's going on between having the city named. Is this an issue that we need to be aware of at all during this situation?
Yeah, the city isn't named as what the plaintiff has described as a necessary party to a lawsuit. It really concerns the issue of a survey that was conducted on a structure on adjoining property, and the allegation is that the property was, the structure was constructed over the property line as a result of the improper survey. Your decision tonight has no impact on the lawsuit. We are a party to it, we're a passive party to it, we're not active, we are actively monitoring it, but not actively litigating it and defending it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Since we don't have any more questions, I need a motion for item number eighteen.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes. Also need a motion for item number nineteen.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes. Thank you. Item number twenty is a resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-five, the application seventeen dash seventy-three, site plan Morgan Retail, twenty West Morgan Street.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty-five, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number sixteen dash seventy-three for site plan approval for redevelopment of a two thousand seventy-four square foot retail building located at twenty Morgan Street, providing for findings, providing for a certificate of concurrence, providing for conditions, and providing an effective date. It's resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty-five by title only.
This is an existing building that had formerly been a dry cleaner, and a new owner has purchased it and is proposing to reopen it as a retail use. They have worked very diligently with the TRC, through the TRC process, to develop a site that's consistent with your special area plan and the intentions of your special area plan. They're using alternative surfaces in their parking lot, they're trying to take their access off of the alleyway, all things that your special area plan purports to desire. So with that, staff is, we're definitely recommending approval of this, they've been wonderful to work with. The building itself is probably going to get a little bit of painting and facelift, but they're not proposing major facade changes. So the pictures that you see in there are what the building looks like today, they haven't really provided any elevations at this point. They have met all of the requirements for drainage and for traffic and all of the existing concurrence requirements, so they're consistent with the Land Development Code. They've met all the site planning provisions of your Land Development Code and your special area plan. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the project, and I can tell you that the Planning and Zoning Board were very pleased to see that this building was going back into service essentially, and they recommended approval at their October sixteenth meeting. With that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
I've got a couple of questions. If you could just, is it a similar drainage parking lot to the aquarium? Is it something similar to that, or?
Well, they're using an alternative surface, and there'll be some modifications, subpar modifications, but because it's an existing building, they actually get an exemption from SWIFT MUD with a lot of the thing, and because they're not adding additional pavement, they meet that exemption criteria.
Okay. Is, do you know if the city's planning on, this might be a city manager question too, the alleyway is pretty rough. Is this something that we're going to look to the applicant, see if they could help with this, or is the city going to help out, or is the city going to come in and update it? Because that's like, it's basically dust right now, and not in good shape, so.
Essentially, what will happen is at the time of permitting, we'll assess, you know, the situation with the alleyway, and if we deem that unsafe, they'll be probably required to pave that as part of that. The Land Development Code supports that, that, you know, if you, actually, your special area plan supports that, if the alleyway needs to be paved as a result of a development, they will need to pave that, and they'll bear that cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to present to commission tonight?
I'll take the applicant's here.
Okay. Are there members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Members of the public wishing to speak in support?
Good evening, I'm Cindy Terrapani. I live at twenty-two North Spring Boulevard. Not really in opposition or support either one, I'm sure the staff has reviewed the site plan, but I did notice in the agenda memo that it says that they're going to put up a black chain link fence along the property line, and I would, clearly, if the site were in the historic district, that wouldn't be allowed. This is in your downtown. I don't think a chain link fence is really going to be conducive to downtown. So if they need security, I understand that, although don't quite understand why they need it if it's a retail building, but if they need a fence, I'm sure there's another fence that would work pretty well besides chain link fence. Thank you.
Other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, does staff wish to make a closing?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other commission comments? Commission Kikta?
Thank you. I'm happy to see that this building is going to be used again and cleaned up, because it's, you know, we need to utilize this part of town a little bit better. I read something somewhere about the, because this is a special area plan, so the parking is behind the building?
Yeah, it's tucked to the side. It's actually, there's two access points on here, both the alleyway access and Morgan Street access. We've asked them to close the access on Morgan Street, which is consistent with your plan, so they'll actually take access off of the alleyway, and it's kind of tucked around the building, the parking area.
And then when it comes to the fence, is that allowed in the?
There's no prohibition on the type of fencing in your special area plan.
So is that something we need to decide tonight, or no, right?
Well, there's no prohibition for the use of a coated chain link fence in the special area plan, so if you want them to use something different, then we would need to condition that, this application tonight, that you want something different there, and I would need some guidance on what you're looking for. But there's nothing in your special area plan that actually denotes what type of fencing is required. It's a little different in the historic district, there's guidelines there.
So is the fence that will be going around the entire property?
The fencing, to my knowledge, is going along the entrance gate to close off the gate, so that that access point is not utilized by patrons. So the access gate will remain, so it can be utilized for any number of other uses, but their handicap accessibility is right there at that gate. They did that purposely, so they didn't have to put a whole bunch more pavement on that property and go through an entire redesign of the property. So as a result, they're closing that access way to make it safe for pedestrians essentially to come across that are maybe handicapped or that type of thing on their handicapped access, and that's why the gate's going there. They can just as much, if you'd prefer to use ballers or some other means to close that, but that's what they're looking to do.
Thank you.
Just help me understand here, Heather, so are they going to fence in, will the fence run along Morgan Street? Is that what I'm reading, or?
Yes, the fence is going to run. What's shown on the plan here is a gateway to be accessed along the Morgan Street entrance. And essentially, that gate, they can open or close, should they need to get in there or utilize it for loading, unloading, but it would not be open for patrons' use.
Okay. And then remind me again where customers, where patrons enter in from?
Patrons are actually going to enter in from the alleyway side, and they're actually going to enter the rear of the building and come around and park in the parking lot, and then they will walk from there to the building.
That's behind the liquor store and the breakfast table, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Well, I wish the applicant was here, because we could understand if there was an important fence to chain link fence. I assume it's the cheapest. I appreciate fencing, I fenced the most of my property tastefully off Tarpon Avenue, but a chain link fence, I'm not opposed to a fence, but a chain link fence, obviously the cheapest of fencing, it's not decidedly pleasing. If we have it within our purview, I would prefer to recommend aluminum fencing. It does cost a little bit more, but A, it lasts longer, and it looks a lot better than chain link fencing, so.
We can certainly condition this application as such.
I would be willing, if it's appropriate, to motion to approve this, with the condition that they cannot use chain link fencing, but rather use like aluminum fencing, which that's just like the fake wrought iron fencing, if you like that, but it's the aluminum fencing, which is, which is a lot more tasteful, and like I say, because that's already along, there's a boatyard or some storage yard to the north of this property, and it's already, you're smiling, is there a reason why?
No, it's just some of the storage yards in this neighborhood will be changing shortly.
Okay, well, as far as this property goes, I would motion to approve it, with the condition that they use aluminum fencing and not chain link.
I would second that. Yeah, that was my concern also, where the fencing was, if it was on Pinellas or Morgan, and I agree that the chain link fencing would not be that attractive there.
Okay, we have first and second.
Can I just get a clarity, real quick, or clarification? This is just over the exit of the parking lot on the Morgan Street, it's not going any further along the property, it's just going over the parking lot.
Correct, because they're using landscaping around it.
Yeah, and the design, I think, for the landscaping looks great, too. It's gonna, this area, this property's been kind of a sore eye, or whatever the phrase is, but for quite some time, so it's exciting to see someone come in and redevelop it, so.
Okay. Well, I'm glad this area will be developed to beautify the area. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes.
And I just want a clarification, that motion included condition six, that, okay, I'm just making sure that we include that in the resolution. Thank you.
Okay. We are now going to the item number twenty-one, which is the resolution twenty, two thousand seventeen dash thirty-six, application seventeen ninety-eight, conditional use for Suncoast Auto Sales at four forty South Pinellas Avenue.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty-six, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number seventeen dash ninety-eight, requesting a conditional use permit to expand the auto sales use into an additional existing building at four forty South Pinellas Avenue in the T five A zoning district, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. Resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty-six by title only.
And with that, I promise this is my last application. With that, this is actually an existing site that there is some auto sales and automotive uses going on. What the applicant would like to do is there's an additional storefront where sales is not currently going on, where that's actually labeled as the body shop. He would like to be able to put two additional cars into that location. By doing that, that's an expansion of a conditional use, and you require in your special area plan, especially this particular transect, that all of those be done through conditional use. So that's what he's here for, he's here for an expansion of the use that's already going on on the property. With that, this staff didn't have a whole, a lot of concern, because we're dealing with an existing building, they're doing it inside, so it's really going to be seen from the storefront. They're not going to be parking cars outside, that type of thing. You know, it's going to still have the appearance of, you know, that retail business, auto body shop, that type of thing. It meets all of the criteria of the conditional use criteria in your Land Development Code and your special area plan, it's consistent with the provisions of the city's comprehensive plan. We have facilities in the area to provide the concurrency for what's going on here. The applicant will need to get a revised business tax license, because now he's going to be selling motor vehicles as well as doing auto body. So that's the activating permit essentially that he'll need to obtain after this, if this application is successful. And with that, staff is recommending approval of resolution two thousand seventeen thirty-six with two conditions. One is the building located at and along the north property line, on the site plan is to be used for auto sales, all other uses are subject to further review, subsequent approval consistent with the Land Development Code, and with the exception of the automotive repair, which is an existing non-conforming use, and subject to the limitations of section twenty-four of your Land Development Code. And then condition two, the conditional use will expire within one year of approval if a building permit or business tax license is not issued for this property, for the use for the proposed building. So he'll just need to update his business tax license to actually activate this conditional use. The Planning and Zoning Board saw this on October sixteenth, and after limited discussion, recommended approval. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
I've got a question. So if this property were to sell, change hands, this conditional use stay with the property?
Correct.
Okay, would they be able to do selling of cars outside of the building?
Not without coming back and modifying it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff?
I've got one other question, I'm sorry. This is an area of Pinellas Avenue that it's concrete to concrete to pavement. It seems like with this being a conditional use, that there's an opportunity here to ask the applicant to put in some type of planter bed that isn't here along the parking lot. As our city code has, a thirty-six inches, I believe it is, planters around a parking lot. Currently, this property doesn't have that, that abuts Pinellas Avenue. So is it fitting in this situation to ask this?
You can put a condition on this to tell the applicant that you want to add additional landscaping if you choose. I would recommend against it, because you're dealing with a non-conforming site that was allowed for this use prior to your special area plan, and the, they're not actually modifying the building, they're changing a use out, but they're not really modifying the building or the parking lot at this point. Usually, when we look for modifications, is when there's some change to the structure itself. Literally, it's a use going in and out. So yes, you could, you can legally do that, but that's how staff looked at it, because you're dealing with a non-conforming site, you're dealing with a use going in and out of the building, it's, they're not doing any kind of changes to the site at this point.
But it's still a conditional use, right?
Correct. You can put a condition on that if you choose to.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Okay.
All right. Does the applicant wish to present to commission tonight? Why don't you come up and give us your name and address for the record, please, sir? Your work address is fine.
That's Mike Murphy, four forty South Pinellas Avenue, Tarpon Springs.
All right. Is there anything that you wish to discuss with commission tonight regarding this application?
I think right now, as everybody knows, that's been a dealership since nineteen twenty-nine, I think is when it started, it's a Chevy dealership, and it's been a car place for that whole entire time. Now, I know that they have concreted that entire lot, we pay extra for that, so any runoff water, anything that goes on, we're paying for that because of fact we don't have any type of grass to absorb anything. So I don't know if we dig the place up, but that's kind of where it's at. But other than that, it's just, you know, it's business as usual, there's, we've had classic cars for sale there, there's already a lot there now that does sell classic cars, and he is able to sell them out front. What I propose to do is basically have a few inside showroom, and basically, I'm just focusing on that part of it. So I am in unit A of that property, there's three different addresses that's used, and I'm in four forty South Pinellas, you know, A. He is in B, and the apartment's not used upstairs.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Do you have any cars in the building right now?
As far as just mine goes, the section I have is around three thousand square feet, and I'm just, basically have cars that we're building right now for customers. So I don't have any new, you know, car, you know, classic cars to sell right now until everything's all done and approved. The other, the other business, which is Suncoast Speed, does have cars for sale, they have them inside, they do usually have three or four out front at any given time.
Are there members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, members of the public wishing to speak in support of the application? Members of the public just wishing to speak generally? Any closing statement from either applicant or staff?
Not at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Are there any other commission comment, question?
I've just, I would like to bring something up. Pinellas Avenue is an area of town that we've got multiple issues on. From previous buildings, it's not an area that's necessarily desirable site-wise, from Mirs to Doda Canice or Livock. We've done a good job as a city doing some streetscape and some landscape, but there's an opportunity here to encourage a business owner to add some vegetation, or if it's potted plants or something along those lines in the front of the property to help buffer some of the situation, some of the concrete. or if it's potted plants or something along those lines in the front of the property to help buffer some of the situation, uh, some of the concrete or whatever it may be, this is an opportunity here. Uh, secondly, um, if this changes hands, we don't know what type of car lot would go in here then at that point. Uh, I'm completely for this property and the business owners, and I think it's a great asset to have in our town with the classic cars and the items that are here. Um, but being able to address uh one of the properties that is not necessarily a uh, let's say, a super beautiful from the road with the concrete to concrete to pavement, um, there's an opportunity here. So if there's anyone else is willing to come along with me with that, I would, I think it would be a good idea, but if not, I understand as well.
Are you asking for potted plant?
Uh, potted plants in the front or some type of area where maybe the concrete would be cut out and some type of vegetation be added along what the city code shows for parking lots, so.
Thank you. Mr. Licorice, you're planning to put some kind of landscaping on uh South and North Pinellas Avenue? Is that any opportunity that we uh can work with the applicant?
Hmm, I don't think so, in that, in this case, in this piece of property, I don't think so.
Need a motion?
I make a motion with the condition that.
What's the condition?
The can, the condition is that um the option would be to add a couple of potted plants um out front between the parking lot and the sidewalk, or the option would be to cut a two feet or three feet area to add vegetation for buffering between the car lights and Pinellas Avenue. And then along with uh staff's com- uh staff's recommendations.
Do we have a second?
Well, I want a second.
Yeah, you could, you got two options there.
So there, well, it gives options to the applicant at that point.
I think the applicant said that cutting the concrete would be an issue with uh uh runoff. So I'm I'm not sure if that would make a a difficult situation for that property.
Yeah, the applicant mentioned that there is, being all concrete, they've got all runoff because there's no grass, it just goes under the concrete on the property, so. I don't think that would be necessarily an issue if there is a, an area cut out for runoff to go.
I would agree with the potted plants, but I don't know about him putting up it.
I I would agree with the potted plants.
Do we have any issues with the DOT right away?
Hmm?
Do we have any issues with the DOT right away where these go?
There's no issue with it, I mean, they've got, that's where their access is, they've got legitimate access, it's it's existing access to the, to the right of way.
I'm talking about where these pots and where these things.
The parking lot actually goes into the building, the parking's actually against the building, I believe. You don't have anything that actually fronts into, because you actually pull in there and kind of just turn around, yeah. The, so the the parking lights actually would be going into the building with the exception of when the the car turns around to come back out. Um, yes, you would have some issues, because you've got a very tight area there, we'd have to really look at, you know, what's the distance criteria for the sidewalk, because the right of way is close to the property line. Yeah, they do.
Have trouble visualizing where these things are gonna go when that uh.
Yeah, because they're gonna end up, they're gonna end up near the sidewalk or very in close proximity to the sidewalk. That that sidewalk is a larger sidewalk in that area.
It would not really be feasible to have potted plants there.
I don't want to say it wouldn't be feasible, we'd really have to look at that, that's not something that we looked at.
You may need some DOT approval, and that's.
If you're close to the right of way, yes.
So if you look at Google Maps, there's a car directly facing Pinellas Avenue. Um, and it's nothing against the applicant, I'm just looking at it from a city standpoint. There's rectangle pots that can be used with vegetation can be put in there, so they don't have to be large round pots. It could be a rectangle pot that's two feet tall with a, some type of vegetation that's got two or three feet tall in that as well, so. Um, it's confined, it adds beautification to the property and the area. Um, that's maybe, that would be the recommendation that I would suggest in the condition. Um, if the rest of the board doesn't feel that it's appropriate, that's fine.
That would be up to.
Oh, sure.
Sure, yes, sir.
I don't know if you've really watched the traffic, it walks up and down, and I got a bus stop right in front of us. I think that having to try to put those pots so close like that to the edge, because of the way this, the front is, it's really, it's not really that deep in the front. So where the cars are, there's a driveway, then there's an aisle where a gas station, you know, was kind of there at one time. And I think that I would be liable if somebody's walking down there, riding their bike and running into these concrete pots that are sitting there, because there's not that much room to put something like that. And the way the sidewalk's doubled in front of me, it it just, it just shortens that whole parking lot. So, I mean, personally, me, I have people walking up, handicapped people, I've got everybody, and I set a bus stop there. I just don't see why I'm gonna have, you know, that kind of a deal that's gonna make a repair shop look any better. Unfortunately, it is what it is, but um I still feel that I got liability I'm gonna be creating here, and I, and like I said, the concrete, that could be a whole nother story. So I just, again, feel that that, I don't think I can make that place look that much be- better right this minute. I mean, we'll try to get in the painting part of it next, but um I just don't want the liability of putting some kind of a concrete pot there that doesn't blow away or somebody's gonna hit it. That's just my feeling about that. I don't think there's anywhere else like that in Tarpon that I know of that's got pots, except for maybe the bike path, those big huge ones, but um it's pretty cramped where I'm at.
I think the area I was referring to is on the north, the north part of your property, not necessarily where the gas station part used to be.
Close to the dollar, dollar generals or dollar.
That's the part of the parking lot I was referring to, um, not by, yeah, exactly.
I've got, I've got the um Martin Luther King sign there, right now, I've got uh electrical that goes right up to the sidewalk right there also, so I don't know between those how much room I'd have to do that.
Okay, so as a whole, as a board, we've got an issue, I think, all along Pinellas Avenue, and there might be an opportunity to talk to the city manager and the city staff about this when applicants come forward in the future um to address these areas, um, to try to bring them up to match what a code would be uh for new, new properties or something along those lines. For beautification, this is the area where a lot of tourists are, is the areas where we have a lot of heavy traffic that's at a standstill a lot of the time, because it's a, there's, this is gridlocked. So um if there's an opportunity in the future to encourage beautification, I think we should take that route, but uh I understand right now.
I think that's the best, the best route, because now that we know that's a concern, we can look at all these that come in, go out and do a site thing, look at the DOT in future applications after this one, because just eyeballing or remember is gonna be a problem, but as ones come along there and stuff, and we can, because there may be some chance to partner um some city and some private partnerships to do some landscaping like we've done all up and down there, so, so we will on future ones do that and stuff. And, you know, later on, if we see something that we can do and partner with him, we'll go talk to him, I just don't see it right now, but um if there's an opportunity for a partnership later on to get him involved at a later time, we could do that, too.
Okay, I would encourage that if we could.
Commission Carr, that was a good point. I think we all on the same page trying to beautify the area. But I don't see that to be feasible in this particular case, but we'll look at it in the future. Uh, you had a motion, do you want to modify that, or?
Yeah, I'll rescind the conditional um portion I added to it, and just go along with the staff's recommendations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
End roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Victor?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two is a resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-seven, Elks Club Christmas Tree Lot.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty-seven, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, requesting an agreement with the DOT for use of a parcel of property at the southwest corner of US Highway nineteen and Tarpon Avenue in Tarpon Springs by the Tarpon Springs Elks Lodge seventeen nineteen for sale of Christmas trees, providing for distribution and providing for an effective date. Resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty-seven by title only.
Thank you. Are there any commission comment?
I'd like to comment.
You wanna comment?
Since I'm an officer of the lodge, um, just so, I'm putting a plug out there, if you could let um Townsend know that we will be open uh the day after Thanksgiving, because I know Townsend calls me every year. Um, but we will be open the day after Thanksgiving, uh, we work twelve-hour shifts um from the day after Thanksgiving till the trees are sold out. And we will be located near, it's near Wendy's on nineteen. Uh, the trees should arrive in the next couple of weeks, I believe, they'll be arriving from North Carolina. So um please come out and support the Elks Lodge. Um, the proceeds go to needy families within our neighborhood. Uh, a lot of, a lot of the proceeds go to uh children, help them go to uh the Boys and Girls Club Camp and uh our Elks Lodge camp as well, so if you can come out and support us, we would appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. I also like to uh thank the members of the Elks Club for the service and their contributions to our community. They do an excellent job helping the needy. Thank you for what they're doing.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? You're none. Chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
End roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Victor?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number twenty-three, is to transfer Spencer's property from Pinellas County to the city. Mr. Licorice?
So this was an interesting, he's a property that came up, um, well, back in two thousand three, um, and our attorney at that time, John Hubbard, was involved in it. There was an issue with um some people, the Spencers wanting to build on, you can imagine that little piece of land um as you go into Sunset Beach on the right, um, to build in that property. It got a lot of press, as you see the article that we put in the background. Um, somehow, from looking back and all the memories that I've tried to find, hasn't found out, but somehow, again, our state attorney, John Hubbard, was involved, but the Spencers donated the land to the county, and there was a requirement at the time that one of the conditions of doing that was that the city of Tarpon put a sign honoring the Spencers and on that piece of property. I guess this ca- has come back up, because the Spencers, this many years later, um, there's been no sign put on the property, so. A lot of different things have been going on, but what the county has offered to do, and if you can see, it's hard to tell with trying to reproduce the map, but it's a rather skinny rectangle that includes all the way out Sunset Beach on the north side, and even the far portion includes some property there that's now from the county. Um, obviously, you know, I'm not particularly keen on the county owning an edge, the edge of Sunset Beach and going out. The county has offered with this issue to donate it back to us. Of course, we will fulfill our obligation we made in two thousand three and put a sign honored on it, on it, and the Spencers, but um, again, I don't know the reason why it wasn't donated to us and donated to the county, but the county's ready to donate it back to us. Um, either way, we probably need to meet the obligation of the sign that we never did, so. Um, with your vote tonight, I will, I will tell the county that uh we would welcome them to go to their board to donate that property to the city, and we would own it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Licorice. I went here today, I was looking for the sign, it wasn't there. We never put it there. Any questions? Any, are there any public comments on this item? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
End roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Victor?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is twenty-four, discussion honoring George Belairis at the CD facility, and will be presented by Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Um, I've been working with um former Mayor Belairis and thinking about ways we could further honor George, and um not just honor him, but you know, we all know what, how, how, how he, how he promoted Tarpon Springs and the sponging industry. Uh, I've worked with Mark on whether we name certain buildings after him or or find a place, and we kind of narrowed it down to, I I call it the old library, that's the Heritage Center or the, Heritage Center, I I'll, I'll never get, get, get those names right. So it's the old library, and when you walk in, to your right is, is what I see as the more of the Greek heritage section, the Tarpon Springs heritage, and interior left is, I think, currently Christopher Still, and various artists can, 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 can go in there. So I would propose, and I'm I'm open to what the name is, I'm not married to that, but something where the right wing of the building, which is where all the Greek heritage items are, uh, to name that after George M. Belairis, make sure we put his middle initial, so we, there's lots of George Belairises. And and this is twofold, one, to honor him, but second, you know, the, this building and Old City Hall, as we've discussed, are way underutilized. And um, you know, I think as we begin to put more exhibits in the museum, especially those that relate to Greek heritage and sponging, this might be the first step in revitalizing that, that, that building and putting some more of a name to it. So again, we're not, we're not naming the entire building, just ju- just that wing, and there would be a sign over the entrance to, 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 to that, that, that wing with whatever we agree upon, or we can get staff input on that as well. But just simply to have that, that wing of the building named after George to honor him, and obviously, I think in his memory, he would want it not, it's not a, a museum just of him, it, it's to promote sponging and 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 to promote the heritage of Tarpon Springs, so. I just, it's just, it's just a, an idea I had, and I would love every, everybody's input.
Well, thank you. And Vice Mayor, thank you for uh bringing this forward to acknowledge the history of Tarpon Springs. And also, I am very glad to see the Belairis family here to uh express their wish. George Belairis was one of many contributors in the sponge industry. He did an excellent job promoting the city of Tarpon Springs, but many other people did the same thing. And I can name some people that uh they did a lot of work for the sponge industry. I can say Zalekas, Guras, Manusos, Criticas, Diñeo, Cusiora, Sagares, Arfares. The uh San Marcos Brothers, they actually have five boats and providing uh not only jobs, but also the uh, they did a lot for the sponge industry. As a matter of fact, the uh, the sponge boat that we have, the sea sponge boat, it was the Aleni, and it was belonged to them as well. I've received many phone calls from people. They are very concerned, and they like to see that, that uh area that you're talking about to be named as the sponge divers or uh Tarpon Springs Spongers. So you can include everyone and to have a big uh list of names there, a big plaque with all the names there to uh to honor everyone that actually worked there. And of course, uh, Mr. George Belairis' name should be there on top, because he was a big contributor to our uh sponge industry. Any other comment?
Yes, uh, I understand what you're saying, Mayor. Um, and I think maybe there are places for, for that as well, maybe on the Sponge stocks. Um, we're talking about just honoring George, and I, I, I would agree that we need to do that at some location, uh, because he contributed so much to uh to Tarpon Springs as well as promoted Tarpon Springs. Um, so I don't know if we can do what you're suggesting, maybe somewhere else, uh, maybe on the Sponge stocks, but I would like to see George um have some type of um honor, it's, you know, and that's a recommendation with Vice Mayor uh Banther at the Heritage, Heritage Center, so I, I can't think of another place. But I, but I would, I would like to see him honored.
Yeah, well, for the record, I like to say that that was a recommendation that actually came from the people, that's the phone calls that I've received.
Thank you, uh, okay, so. I don't know as much history as I should with the sponge industry and all the names that have come before us and created Tarpon Springs, what Tarpon Springs is now today and the history, but I'm grateful for all the things that have happened. Can we come to a compromise between the two, if it be Mr. Belairis and honor Mr. Belairis and memory of all the s- uh sponge fishermen in Tarpon Springs, and then also have maybe a plaque there that lists these other names as well? That where we incorporate and honor Mr. Belairis, but then we're also honoring all the other fishermen that have come along with them uh in our history? Is that something that we could include? So it'd be like, the wing of the building would be George and Belairis, and memory of George and Belairis and all sponge fishermen um in Tarpon's past. And then we could collect the names throughout, collect the additional names throughout the town and families that are throughout the town that have had family members in the business. Um, and we could add to them also in the years to come as well, with maybe another plaque there within the, the building.
Mayor. Mayor, I'm ready.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, and Mayor, yes, I agree, there's many families that have, that have, that have contributed. I mean, we, 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 we don't have enough buildings to honor all of them, and certainly, I, 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 I wish we did. But I want to emphasize what I said at the beginning, that this is, this is not to create a shrine to George Belairis. I, I'm using it, A, yes, something to mer- to hon- to honor him, because it wasn't so much that he himself went sponge diving every day and 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 grew the industry in that hands-on aspect, as many people have. It's more how he used publicity and 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 the one in H F R B before, before social media and the internet to bring attention to Tarpon Springs and all these sponge divers. So and so what we're doing is taking a building that's. So, and, so what we're doing is taking a building that's highly under, under, underutilized, I don't go in there besides the, the, the Citizens Academy, I know you, 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 you use it for the sister cities, uh, meetings, and then, you know, create a, create a wing in his honor there, that's, that will honor all the sponge divers in there, and will hopefully create more exhibits and have that, that part of the building more utilized, and that idea's never been, been brought forward to this board, you know, you know, before. I wish the individuals that contacted you would have contacted myself or others, especially being that my name was on the agenda for, 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 for this item. I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't want to leave any family out, but, 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 but I think if, 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 if we do nothing, or, 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 and then we, we, we don't agree, we simply have what's continued to be a underutilized building with no name to, to, to that wing, and rather lackluster exhibits, but I think i- if we start down this road by honoring George for this part of the building, it's going to bring a lot more attention to all the families that you just mentioned, uh, for sponge diving in that part of the building. I'm not even Greek or sponge diver or anything, but I think that's important that we keep that history alive in Tarpon Springs, as we have a hard time getting divers down to the docks. So, that's all I'm saying, it's A to honor George, and B to bring more attention to, to the importance of sponge diving and, uh, create that type of museum in there. Um, as far as the name goes, I, I wouldn't, I would, you know, tonight, as far as I'm concerned, look, 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 look more for consensus that we want to go down the, the, this, this road, have Mark and staff come back with ideas of exactly what name we'll pick, you know, and how we'll incorporate maybe some of these other sponge divers in there. Um, you know, not to pick a name tonight, I do want to, it is my wish that George's name is prominent on there, and that's the main part, that's why I, 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 I brought this forward. Um, but again, I, I don't, I don't think George would want us to create a shrine to him, but I think he would, I think we are honoring him by doing this, by bringing attention and a spotlight to the sponge industry and under, and the underutilized city building that currently, you know, just, um, isn't utilized well, so that, that, that's where I stand, I'm completely open to compromise. I, 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 I think staff can get, can get creative with, with the name and how we incorporate other families, uh, in this, but, you know, I, I would like to see, I, I, as I put on the agenda, to have his name prominent on there because to, to honor what he did for Tarpon Springs, bringing attention to the sponge industry.
Mayor, can I say something about the future plans?
Sure.
Because we're talking about it. If you remember, and I know it's taken a long time to do, but we're just about to go out to bid for the final sidewalks that will complete our walking circle of Tarpon Springs, the connection between the sponge docks and the Heritage Center Museum. Remember what we've been doing for the last ten or twelve years, probably thought about by commissions the last fifteen to eighteen years? We started on Tarpon Avenue, taken over Tarpon Avenue, then we did the trail corridor down to our Live Oak Park, which we've got, then it was the sponge docks renovations to renovate and do the renovation of sponge dock. Now it's that connection back through St. Michael's Shrine, Unitarian Church, to the Heritage Center and that walking circle. We had always talked about this, in this town, about after we get that done, to begin not only having that circle walk for Tarpon, but to have a historical, cultural things throughout that walking to begin on, um, downtown to honor the history of the founding fathers of the downtown, um, there, um, along the trail, whatever we want to honor, to honor people of the docks, so in the future, as we talk about all the different people, and we need to be thinking about, when we get those sidewalk paves and have that done, um, I already had a meeting within the last couple of weeks with our new Cultural Affairs Director, Diane Woods, to talk about preparing and getting prepared to start the research for, um, looking and meeting with the community to look in at in the future, um, where we're going to put these, these items, whether it's statues, whether it's plaques that talk about our history throughout that walking area and, you know, for the next three or four years, so hopefully, with the next three or four years, we're going to be honoring a whole bunch of people, and when people come to town, we finally have a hotel here, you can take two or three days to walk that whole corridor and see everything along it, and kind of anybody's been down to the River Walk in Tampa and how they honor their history and they honor art and they honor culture, you can walk one end from the Lightning Arena all the way down to the other end, and there's the whole heritage of Tampa there. That's kind of what we've been looking at for the last, so there's going to be plenty of opportunities to honor a whole lot of people who made Tarpon what it is along those as we go along, so I just want to say those, those opportunities to honor, um, we're going to welcome input from the docks, the downtown, and everywhere of who and what, what buildings, what people we need to honor, so you could take two or three days, um, like you do sometimes if you stay downtown and walk that River Walk, take two or three days and learn the whole history, culture, and have the art along the way to do that, so that will be upcoming, um, as we finish the last phase of those sidewalks and have our walking circle complete.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Licorice, uh, I think that's a very, very good idea, and I'm glad that you're working with that. Uh, we, not historians over here, uh, I like to see the historical society to be involved with that, provide us the, uh, the truth history, uh, about the sponge industry and the fathers of the city.
Right.
Yes.
Um, and I, I want to thank you for bringing this forward, because I know it's, it's, um, something we've been discussing for quite some time. Uh, George, like, you know, we've said previously, was a pillar in this community, thank you for the family for being here, and he, he, he was not only, um, he taught us about the sponging industry, but he did bring, he was responsible for bringing tourists to our community. Um, he made the sponge docks, I'm sorry, I honestly feel he made the sponge docks survive and what they are today, and, um, he made so many documentaries and, uh, videos and films, and it, it's amazing what, what George did for our community, and, um, I, I would love to see when you walk in, into the Heritage Center, to the right, before you walk down those stairs there, George M. Bellerus Wing. Make it simple, and I, I, I think, um, he, George deserves that, and then if we want to, uh, honor others, so many people in this community that we need, that needs to be honored, um, but if we want to honor some of the other spongers and fishermen and stuff, maybe that would be more appropriate down at the sponge docks. I'm not, you know, I'm not quite sure where we could put that, but I honestly think we could maybe make a plaque in there, but, but just name the wing, George M. Beller, I'm sorry, I'm talking my hands, George M. Bellerus Wing, and, um, and then, like I said, we could always just put a, put a plaque or something else within the wing, or, uh, do something down at the sponge docks, but like I said, George was a pillar in this community, and, um, he needs to be honored. Thank you.
There's no doubt that he was a big contributor to our industry here. Any other question? I want to go to the public comments.
Mike Kuskudis, six-two-three East Harpen Avenue. Chief, nice look, I like that. Um, in any event, I, I, I bet, I liked the new shirt, I haven't seen you in a while. Um, but I, I bet y'all didn't know that, that during its prosperous years, that sponging led the state in its gross national product. A lot of people don't know that. George knew. George was the encyclopedia of sponging and the history of sponge diving in this community. I think it's important that he be recognized, however you decide to recognize him, but I think he needs to be recognized. Uh, the idea of naming a wing after him, that's a good idea. If you want to, and I, you know, my family also has a history of sponge, being involved in the sponge industry here in Tarpon Springs, but whenever I think of sponge and the sponge docks, I think of George Bellerus. Um, I think the room could honor all the sponge divers, because there are a lot of sponge divers who impacted this community, who made this community what it is, but it was the commercial aspect of promoting the industry, not from the sponge, but getting the tourism and bringing recognition to the life and the hard life and, and, and the Greek culture and, and what it means to be a sponge diver, that was George Bellerus. So, I think whatever you do, I think he needs to be honored in some form or fashion. Thank you.
Good evening, Beverly Bellerus, ten-twenty-eight Peninsula Avenue. Vice Mayor, thank you for bringing this forward. I know there's been discussion of whether George should be honored, obviously, in my opinion, he should be, and that's not because I'm his, uh, late wife, it's mostly because of what he did in the community, and yes, we should honor all the sponge divers in Tarpon Springs, and we should have plaques for everyone in that wing, but as some of you have noted, George was in every magazine throughout the country, in the United States, through Europe, and there has been many times I've been on an airplane, and you pick up a, a magazine on the airplane when they used to have them, they don't have them anymore, and you'd open it up, and there'd be six pages about Tarpon Springs, and it wasn't all about George Bellerus, it was about Tarpon and the divers and the industry. The man lived and breathed it, he represented this city on the, uh, CBB for years, where Tarpon Springs was literally ignored by the county and tourism. He made this county aware that we were here, we were important, and we got our dollars that we needed to promote our tourism. So, when you make your decision, I want you, don't make it just because of it's George, but what the man brought to this community. The docks brings in between, used to bring in between eight hundred and a million tourists every year, and a lot of that was because he was out there promoting this community. He believed it, he lived it, and I said once before, he had a story to tell, but he never recognized that he was the story. Journalists would come to Tarpon Springs from every part of the world and interview George, and he didn't talk about George, he talked about the divers that gave their lives to this community through the years, the hardships and the families. He never always talked about him, he talked about everyone that was ever involved, and when the industry went downhill and it was nonexistent, he started classes at then St. Pete Junior College and brought others into the industry. He brought divers from Greece so they could introduce American people how to dive, to keep the industry alive. So, yes, um, I would be more than grateful, I know, I think it would be a twinkle in his eye to think that he was remembered for what he did in this community. So, Vice Mayor Banther, Commissioners, thank you very much for considering this tonight. Thank you.
I'm Frances Bellerus, Vescarolas, fourteen oh-six Gulf Road, Tarpon Springs. I can sit here and brag all night long about my brother, but I don't have to. His actions spoke for him, but I only want to make three points. One, St. Nicholas Boat Line, which he was a part of and worked all his life there, was the first tourist attraction in the state of Florida, and my father received a gold medal from the governor of Florida for that. The purpose wasn't to promote our personal business, because if that were the case, here we're in business from nineteen twenty-four. I think we're probably the only people that have a very hard time to raise the price of our boat line ticket, even a dollar. We're eight dollars and we're ten dollars, and the tourists are saying, we can't believe it, because I, I take care of the Facebook thing, and we get five stars, and why is it that we do that? We do that because we just want to keep educating people about the industry, make them interested in coming to Tarpon Springs. Another point I wanted to make is, I agree with Mr. Kuskudis and with my sister-in-law, Beverly, it was never, ever about George, everything he said and everything he did, it's, I think if, if we could look inside of him, we'd probably find sponge rather than blood, that's how much he loved it, that's how much he wanted to teach it, and that is why, when the schools were allowed to bring field trips, from my father's day through my brother's day, our local school field trips were free for the kids. And as Beverly saw a magazine on the flag going over, I'm sitting on British Airways flying overseas, and I see my brother come up on the screen, and he didn't talk about our business, he talked about the sponge industry and how the people gave their lives to continue that effort of educating everyone about it. And the other thing I'd like to say, and I'm sure most of you sitting here know, uh, we are working together with Tina Bukavales, and in that room that you'd like to dedicate to my brother, we are giving part, we'd love to give it all, but it's unfit, of the St. Nicholas the Third, which was the main vessel that we had from beginning to end, now we're working on the seventh, and before the Disney's and everything came to the state of Florida, my father had six boats, tourist boats, and two cruisers, because that was tourism in Florida, that, and then Wiki watching and Silver Springs. But part of our vessel, and we have contributed towards that effort, is being cut by, uh, someone who was with the city that knows how to do it and knows how to take care of it, and that is going to be placed in Heritage Museum. That vessel is registered with the state of Florida because of its significance, it is a historical vessel, so something that the state recognizes and gave, and named it as something historical for our state, we are placing in the Heritage Museum, not just to honor us and our business and our parents that created this business, but to honor all the divers, and not only the divers and the captains, but anyone that worked on the vessels, so if it's as important enough to us to give this to the city, it would be greatly appreciated if the city shows their appreciation in return. Thank you.
I thank you, I'm, I'm Nick Bellerus, uh, I live in Clearwater, born and raised in Tarpon, and, uh, what I'd like to comment on, you know all of the surface things that has happened, the, the movies that occurred in Tarpon, the TVs, and, but there are the things that were behind the scene that George was instrumental in, and we, while I was working with, uh, St. Petersburg College, uh, some of the initiatives that we did jointly with various departments in the state of Florida. When they had the uranium problem in Russia, Chernobyl, and they found that the outgrowth of that was, destroyed the sponge beds in the Mediterranean, George was contacted to see if we could do some initiative to help provide the natural sponge in, uh, the world markets. George took the gauntlet and moved to encourage individuals to go into sponging, they used fishing boats, they did, went out for a day or two, they would get forty pieces, fifty pieces, the prices were good, so George was instrumental in producing, helped produce, he didn't do it himself, but helped generate a, a production of sponges to satisfy part of the world's needs. helped generate a, a production of sponges to satisfy part of the world's needs. Now, following that, when the net fishermen ban came and you had hundreds of fishermen in the state of Florida that were unemployed because they could no longer do net fishing, then the question came, how do we train them? So George, with his thought of coming to the college, we created courses that we would train individuals to be able to work effectively on the sponge boat. There were, it was a six-month program, at which time they received their training. George was the primary oversight of, of that, of that project. They went sponging and hopefully that there were benefits that were created into the marketplace. So he has continually, while we were engaged at the college and our relationship, both professionals, I as a educator and he as a professional in the sponge industry, was to look at initiatives that promoted sponge industry and to promote Tarpon Springs. As you've heard said, he spent his life, he, he lived 87 years, all save four years that he was in the military service. He was at the sponge docks. Well, naturally not, but pretty close, probably age five, we all started working with my dad at age five. So from five, he lived through 87, take five and four in the military is nine, so he spent a few years continuously working in the sponge industry. So his gift to all of us, and I live in Clearwater, but I am a Tarpon person at heart, was to help promote and create visibility to all of those individuals who helped make Tarpon Springs what it was. You remove the sponge industry from Tarpon Springs and the, from the period of 1924, 1934, my father took the sponge boat up the Mississippi to the World's Fair in Chicago. Again, that was a, an effort to be part of the Florida exhibition and help promote the state of Florida. So all of those initiatives, if we were better businessmen, then basically this would be a non-issue because the focus would not have been on Tarpon, but basically gathering sponges and putting them into the marketplace. Because there is a huge demand throughout the world for the natural sponge. Russia, Japan, China, and other places. So I, again, there, there are things that he created initiatives for that are not generally known publicly because he wasn't seeking recognition, but was looking to help promote the industry. I thank you for your time. I'm sorry, but it's easy when you're, when you're speaking about George, that there's so many different things that he was a part of, that you don't know when to shut up. And I, I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, back to the commission. I will suggest that Mr. LaCouris will take a look at it and bring us back recommendations to vote on the next step. Any other comment? Any other comment?
Yes, I have a process for the, under your, that's what I gotta bring back.
Yeah. Because that was only for discussion.
I have a discussion as a process, obviously the naming process, so I'll bring that back forward to you for the naming process, to do that, that, that sounds like that's consensus of the board, so I'll bring that back to you.
Well, that concludes the regular session agenda. And we are now going to the CRA meeting. Now called to order the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting of the city of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017 at 8:42 PM. Item number one is to reject responses of Q RFP number 170128-P-CM, redevelopment of property located at 144 East Tarpon Avenue. Mr. LaCouris will present this item.
Excuse me, can we have a roll call first?
Oh, yeah.
Chairman Alouzes.
Here.
Vice Chair Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seaver.
Here.
Commissioner Kika.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Mr. LaCouris will do the presentation. Oh, you, I'm sorry.
Yes, I need to recuse myself from the, this item, one of, one of the applicants is my tenant.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Hey, I'll turn Karen Lemmons to talk about the process and our recommendation.
Thank you, Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager. This is the, what's formerly known as the Forbes Property at 144 East Tarpon Avenue. It's been before you quite some time, over the past several years. I've got a memo that I've prepared for you that you have, that gives a background of both of the proposals and the evaluation committee's recommendation to reject both proposals. So you have that information there. For some of your background, the city about five years ago established a vision and goals for that property, that we were looking for something that was mixed use. We were looking for a first-floor commercial office, retail, restaurant type of use. With second-floor apartments, we felt that bringing people to live downtown would be very important for us. We were looking for a business that would help bring in visitors and people to the downtown area. We were looking to maximize that lot. You've got a couple, it runs from Tarpon to Court Street. So those were the, that was the overall vision and goals for that, for that property. The RFP that we, we issued reflected those goals. And as my memo indicates, that both proposals met some, but not all of those goals. And we realize that we may never get a very perfect proposal, but as a city, we've committed to essentially provide that land. And so we're looking for a project that's going to as closely align as possible with what the goals that we have set out to be. I do want to say that we were pleased to receive two proposals and we recognize the hard work and effort that went into both of those. And moving forward, I recommend that we try again and issue another RFP. In the meantime, we're going to be looking at our market demographics and looking at the goals and vision that we have for the property because that remains, our goal is to bring a successful development there and one that meets both the city's needs, as we've identified, and one that also meets the needs of the developer and the business. And with that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Just to add to that, just to go back, if you remember, of course, we've had two people that we had go through a process and have that property. Both of those plans were just what we wanted. It was gonna be, whether it be one or four businesses downstairs, it was gonna be businesses fronting Tarpon Avenue, businesses fronting Court, upstairs apartments. So we had two of what we wanted, although we must remember, the economy wasn't great at the time. Both of them are developers, one of them local, one of them who's been involved with properties here. And at that time, and in economic aspects, they couldn't pull the things off. But those were the, those were exactly what we're looking for, especially with all the money we put into this property. You know, this would be a different case if we were putting this up for sale for the commercial value of it and recovering that money back for the CRA. It would be a different story. But with us, you know, in essence, giving it away with conditions, we really, you know, kind of set the standards of what those two proposals were and what they couldn't pull off at this time. Both of the proposals that, that you see in there that the committee evaluated, they had pieces, but they didn't have the whole package. Both of these presentations can come back at a later time and try to come closer to the vision and the complete package when we offer it out again, but neither were close to coming where they want. Although again, both of them have the potential to hear in what we want, I think going through the process, know that could bring back a project that could meet that or something else. So, so basically, the recommendation of the committee, I was not involved in the committee, but obviously I've been involved, you know, I was involved with the first two groups we brought in to try to develop the company. The economy is getting a lot better. I think we, you know, owe it to the CRA, the taxpayer of the CRA, to take one more attempt at this and see what's out there. There is, you know, our standards may have to come down for what we're doing. Hopefully we'll get proposals in, or maybe these two applicants will bring back board that we want and go into the process that we could. But I think we owe it for all we put into the property to try to, to try to do it, go out one more time and try to bring a proposal in. Again, especially with us about giving the property away, that's gonna be a revitalization of downtown. I think that, that the committee that's been involved in this, I think that was their vision, and that's why they're recommending to you tonight, to reject both proposals and at a later time, go back out and try it again to find exactly what we want for down there.
Thank you, Mr. LaCouris. Well, the golden objective that we have for the special area plan is to have mixed uses, retail offices and residential. That's why, as you said, that we are practically giving away the property in order to get the uses that we like to have for the CRA. The question that I would have is, was that criteria part of the RFP, it was communicated to the applicant?
Yes, it was. We also had, and if the procurement director wants to discuss this, but we had a pre-proposal meeting where we have the applicants come in, or anybody's interested in the proposal. And that's an opportunity to sit down and talk about the city's vision and the goals. So that was also done, but it, yes, it was part of the RFP.
The other question that I have is, you mentioned about the selection committee. What selection process do we use? You mentioned about points system. Can you explain that?
Jay Jack is procurement services director. Mayor, as you recall, when you all selected the internal auditor a couple of months back, very same process, same kind of point system we used at that time.
Yeah, we had, we had categories for the design and the development team, the financial capability, the overall development plan. And within each of those categories, we had scoring points.
Well, I'd like to comment, I'd like to thank both applicants for the proposals they make and for the time that they invested and the hard work, and really appreciate that. Any commission comments? Anyone? No? We go to public comments.
I think Ray has one.
I have a comment.
Oh, yeah. Well, we'll come back.
Okay.
We'll come back. In here yet?
Public comments?
Yes, go ahead.
David Bolton, 508 North Gross Avenue, Tarpon Springs. Just a couple of things. I didn't get to see either the proposal of what they proposed. And I did a little bit of research on one of the businesses, and I just wanted to make sure we understand exactly an opportunity that we might be missing, that might be worth making some adjustments to what we were looking for. If you could have a business come into downtown, normally they're, they're not chains, they're hoping to make it with word of mouth, social media, they're, they're, you know, hoping that they'll have a unique kind of angle and get some people to come into downtown. But if you could have a business come into downtown that was automatically gonna have 210 people, maybe visit downtown multiple times a week, that sounds like a win to me. I live in Tarpon Springs, I have several offices that I work out of, and one of them is an Indigo Remax Cafe in downtown Tampa, where we actually have a place right down from us called The Sweatshop, which sounds interesting, but it's an old historical building turned into a gym. And we have a lot of those people that come through our cafe before workouts, after workouts, and we're, really, they, they boost our, our business. But I want to talk a little bit about the culture of CrossFit, that if you look at Mary Ellen Spriker in Sports Destination Management, she gives some statistics and demographics that I think are really important. We're not just turning something down without really understanding what we're turning down. This isn't just a gym, it's a culture of people. They're kind of homogeneous to what we have downtown. They're people that are more likely to, to visit boutiques, cafes, craft breweries and restaurants. They are a demographic which over 50% have an income, household income of $150,000 or more. 59% of them have children. 80% of them have some sort of college degree. They're a 50/50 male/female orientation, and 60% of them are 25 to 45 years old. They're sports and travel enthusiasts, and they boost the average local community that they're located in by millions of dollars. Not to mention the special events that the CrossFit culture brings when they do special events to a community. So here you have a business that's looking to do something in downtown that's gonna bring 210 people into downtown weekly, possibly multiple times a week, that have an average household income of $150,000 or more. And they're homogeneous people that like to shop in boutiques, coffee houses, craft breweries, and they're travel-minded, which means they travel to other locations that have CrossFits just because there's a CrossFit there. So I just want you to understand, I wasn't invited by them to speak, so I'm not wearing the shirt, but I did want us to understand, if there's a way to make it work with them, this is a business possibly coming to downtown that brings with them, and I think your Hello Sunshines and your Two Frogs and all those, they would be ecstatic to have that type of demographic visiting our downtown weekly. So that's my comments. Thank you.
That is not allowed. Please don't do that. Thank you. Thank you.
Rich Lundall, 610 East Tarpon Avenue in Tarpon Springs. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Community Redevelopment Agency of Tarpon Springs. I'm a Tarpon Springs business owner with Edward Jones, a privately-held Fortune 500 company with over 14,000 offices throughout U.S. and Canada. Edward Jones is an investment firm that helps families protect, grow and transfer wealth with over a trillion dollars of assets under management. Currently, we have two offices in Tarpon Springs proper, with 60 additional offices throughout the Tampa Bay area, serving the individual investor. The proposal that we submitted before the committee represents a development plan for a third office in the downtown corridor, presented by CKRH Properties LLC, of which I am the president and chief operating officer. Little background on this proposal is in order. More than a year ago, I began a search for land on which to build a new office. You see, my practice has outgrown the space that we have utilized for the last nine years. Need a bigger office with adequate, adequate parking to serve my clients and to continue to grow my practice. The choices were to buy a building and renovate, or find some land and build from the ground up. My vision was to build so the office would be exactly what I needed. I was approached by city officials to look at the property on Tarpon Avenue, which was intriguing at the time. I was also looking at land in two other locations in the city. The downtown land presented some challenges for my vision, but soon became my first choice because of the renewed energy and vibrancy of downtown Tarpon, promoted by an impressive litany of success by your Economic Development Director, Karen Lemmons. Although recently rejected by your appointed committee, our proposal adds a respected business anchor to the downtown corridor and Tarpon Avenue that provides these things. Number one, a growing business that caters to high net worth families. Number two, a business that brings families to the downtown area where they will meet for their appointment, then go out and have lunch at one of the many restaurants like Currents, and then swing by Leslie's, one amazing find, to pick up that unique piece of furniture. Number three, two additional high-end housing units that will cater to the young urban professional that longs for a city experience. Number four, a beautiful and historic building with dependable tenants that will occupy the space for long after you and I are gone. Number five, a million-dollar-plus development of private money injected into the Tarpon Springs economy that will increase all property values, that's taxable property values, that if approved, will in fact come to fruition. The evaluation process identified concerns about both parking on the property and utilization of the full lot from Tarpon Avenue to Court Street in our proposal. Our team heard that and addressed those concerns in good faith by offering a phase two of the project, where under two conditions, we would be willing to build out the remaining space to Court Street in the future by adding office and/or restaurant space, four additional apartments and a public courtyard in a common area. At three separate junctures, the process produced a score from each member on the evaluation committee, ranking the proposal from CKRH Properties a clear winner in the bid. Properties a clear winner in the bid process. That's three times. Yet, we find ourselves at the end of the process that has failed a third time to find a solution to the vacant lot on 144 East Tarpon Avenue. My friends, this is not a perfect proposal, but I would argue that there will never be a perfect proposal for development in the downtown space. Yet, this proposal that we have offered is a good one, with business owner and community support alike. Please consider accepting our offer to build and develop this mixed-use design for the downtown Tarpon Springs corridor. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ed Hoffman, Hoffman Architects, 26, excuse me, 29 West Orange Street, Tarpon Springs. Just to follow up on Mr. Lundell's comments, I was the architect, Hoffman Architects were the architects, and I'm, unfortunately, I'm not sure of what information you all have to know if you've seen our full thing or not to be able to tell you about it. But when we did come back, as, as he was mentioning, and did what could be a second phase, that phase was, had all of those elements. I, I think the whole staff of the committee that reviewed it thought it was the perfect solution, between the multifamily, the retail, the courtyard, all of that. And it shows that the point is, we get it. We understand what they're looking for, what you all are looking for, and totally agree with it. However, when you take that, when you take your project and spend an extra million dollars on that second phase, and you're right up there on Court Street, eliminated all the parking, and that you're asking the, everyone to overlook the, you know, the back of Teddy's, you know, the meat market there with the dumpster and, and the truck units and all that kind of stuff, that is not the high-ranked district. It's, the, the project is there, it's designed, but if it doesn't make economic sense, it's not going to go anywhere. We had the vision, it just doesn't have the economic reality at this point. It has a potential of tying into some great things. It's wonderful around back behind the depot, back in there, that new, the corridor through there. Once, if back behind the meat market, that could be a whole nother thing tied into our courtyard, and it could all work really great, but it has to be the critical mass to make it happen, which isn't there now. So, so I'm not sure that we're, you know, waiting for the perfect bride or the perfect husband in this situation. Might be a long, long wait, having been here two times before. And even though the economic conditions are better, I'm curious to know why the, why those developers aren't here now, you know, promoting that perfect plan you had talked about earlier. Anyway, just two other little points about the selection process. Even though we scored, you know, the higher points, and I'm grateful for that, a, a couple of things are that we did a presentation, you know, on this third go-around, we, you know, did a presentation, and it was private as it should be. Then it was opened up to the public for their, for their review of that, of our presentation. So then the other team that is about to present comes in and sits in and listens to all the comments of the jury, and then, then they do their presentation. To me, that's totally inappropriate. You know, they should, all of the review comments should be after all the presentations are made, not open to the public each time, and then come back and say, oh, well, we need to modify our presentation. Whether they did or not is irrelevant. I'm talking about the process. You know, it was real frustrating to have the, everyone talking about our project, what they liked or what they didn't like, with the, you know, the competition, listening to tho, those comments, you know, and then in their presentation, they get to react to them. Or, oh, I'm not going to say this, or they like that, or she liked that. That's inappropriate, you know, in my view. The second one is their idea of that the point system, which is perfectly fine. Oh, and by the way, we've lost, I've lost a lot of, I've lost to a lot of people in a lot of presentations, so this is, isn't a big deal, except that I've never seen one where you had to have consensus. You know, this is not a murder case. To be able to have somebody with a lot of strength and a, to be able to be a holdout and bring the other, all the other scores down, or manipulate the other scores because the one person is doing, you know, is, is really hanging into their position. I mean, it's great that they have their position, but to be able to not make a decision until everybody agrees to dumb it down or to lower it down, whatever, to me, is inappropriate. So, to me, it should have just been an average of their scores. Everybody has an equal say, and the, the numbers are the numbers. So, that's my comments.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Mike Cusco, 623 East Tarpon Avenue. I'm here to sort of piggyback what, what Mr. Hoffman said. You know, there's an economic, there's an economic factor that you have to consider. For somebody to build that, that whole area is, is a multimillion dollar project, and who would put in a multimillion dollar project where you need rental space facing Court Street, and, and you have, no offense to, to Acropolis, because they're, they're a thriving business, but you look out over a dumpster, i, if you've ever smelt what, what the dumpster back there with, you know, the meats and all that kind of stuff, that rot in the dumpster, who would want to rent? So, so the appropriate process is, is through a phasing process. If you look at the plan, it actually meets all the criteria, but it meets it in phases, not one lump sum. And any developer or anybody who may be interested, they're going to face that same problem. And, and I think, look, you have to look at it from, from an economic perspective. Nobody will invest that kind of money to have a, a, you know, the storefront that, that you've seen, and if you haven't seen the plans, or that, you know, Ed Hoffman doesn't design anything that's really not attractive. It's consistent with the downtown. You have the residence, the residential component to that facing Tarpon Avenue. You have the, the office space facing Tarpon Avenue. It's the back part that has to be addressed. And, and as, as, as Rich said, is, you know, that's in phase. When, when the economics dictate that that would be a viable, viable return on your investment, no, no person would invest in real estate, won't, will invest in real estate unless they have some type of return. And, and so you're looking, you're looking at, from not just an investor, you're looking at it from a user as well. Okay? So, you know, I, I think you have to, you know, step back and really reevaluate the criteria and look to see if this can't be done in phases. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. No, no, you can actually be next if you'd like to speak.
Good evening. My name is John Terrapani, 22 North Spring Boulevard. As many of you know, I don't always agree with the staff. Mr. Licoris, get that out of you. The, in this instance, I believe the staff has properly analyzed the situation as it relates to the special area plan and the smart code that you paid approximately $500,000 to adopt. Commissioner Kikta and Mayor Alahoussis, I believe you were both voting members and approved that plan. The last time you abandoned the goals and objectives of that plan, we got Dollar General. And I'm not saying that the, the architecture of the, the one plan for the, that Mr. Hoffman did is, has a beautiful facade. The problem is that the special area plan identified the need for intensity and density in the downtown. That piece of property has a two-point Florya ratio. They're proposing about 25% of that, that usage. We want a bigger footprint on the ground floor and a bigger footprint on the upstairs. The economy is improving rapidly. I can tell you that in the last six months, the square footage lease rates in the downtown have doubled, or close to doubled. So the people who were making the presentations that Mr. Licoris referred to were two years ago. So they didn't have the benefit of those new numbers to, to work with, because it is a numbers game for investors. But the numbers are improving. I also am not sure that the RFP process really reached out to the investment community as widely as it could have, or pinpointed certain developers. I think the city identified, and part of their reason to, to reject some of the proposals were that it didn't bring enough foot traffic, or it didn't create the synergy for downtown. The other project, I didn't get to look at their, their drawings or anything like that, but the one thing, the other thing is, is the buildings will be there forever. So the design is as critical as the use. I mean, the one design you have has a beautiful front facade. I don't think the back facade would get past the Historic Preservation Board, which is another point, that you didn't have any Historic Preservation Board input into these designs, which I think if you go out again, you should get their input, because it's in the National Register District. So I support the staff's recommendation at this time, and maybe everybody come back and sing kumbaya. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it this one?
All right. State your name and your address.
James Cassidy, and business is 425 East Brew Street. And if needed, I think I have a couple of people who can donate some time if I need that. So, first, I just want to thank you for your time. I am one of the owners of the local business, CrossFit Tarpon Springs. We're in our fifth year of business. We're located less than a mile away. Unfortunately, we're in an industrial area, next to areas roofing. I'm here to plead with the CRA to go against the evaluations recommendation to reject our proposal. I think this would be a huge mistake and a very big missed opportunity for the city of Tarpon Springs. I believe that the board members have a true vision of the city, hence why your board actually makes this final decision on how this goes tonight. I've made packets for our vision of 144 East Tarpon Avenue, but I wasn't sure. I guess you guys aren't able to look over them, so I guess I won't be going over that. I have made a couple of changes, though. I made Augustine Construction our architect, as well as our building team, and they have done numerous projects for the city, including the North Stafford Park, which was a lot larger, more intricate job than this would be. I actually heard the concerns over there about the footprint of the building and maybe maximizing the size, and that's actually what we wanted to do. We intended to use all square footage of the property for a building, for our facility. I think Tarpon Springs needs more healthy food options, and that's what we would also be offering with a restaurant in the front, selling all paleo pre-made meals, along with healthy smoothies, and having organic options. Furthermore, we'd be, actually be open on Sundays and Mondays, which you can barely find here, especially downtown. So I was working off the main intent of the RFP. I mainly memorized this RFP, I've read it so many times. And the main objective of the RFP was to increase foot traffic in the downtown. It was suggested that they wanted apartments that was in there as well, but again, the main intent for the property was to boost downtown traffic. And there is no business like our business that would increase downtown foot traffic. We would bring healthy food and fitness options while using our own member base to boost foot traffic in the downtown corridor. I mean, in my eyes, there's nothing better than that. That lot has stood vacant for many years, becoming an undeveloped eyesore in the heart of Tarpon. We would like to develop it to make it a thriving business that brings people every month from out of city, state and country. We put Tarpon Springs on the map. If you go to crossfit.com, we are the only authorized CrossFit certification center in the whole Tampa Bay area. So if you went to crossfit.com and you looked them up, you would actually see our facility on their website. And we bring people who come, and they need hotels, and they are tourists, you know, they want to see tourist attractions, but they're not getting maximized right now. They're going to an industrial area in the middle of nowhere. And if they, if, you know, if you put our business in the heart of downtown, those people are coming downtown, guaranteed. I've had plenty of pictures and, and facts supporting this, and I didn't even have that guy come out here. I mean, that's amazing. Thank you for all those great demographics. So whether they were coming to, you know, eat at Tarpon Tavern or grab a souvenir at one of the many, many, many gift shops, all of the businesses downtown stand to benefit from what we have. You have received and you're going to receive our scoring with recommendation to reject, but these papers don't tell the whole story. That's why I felt the need to be here. I understand the evaluation committee was concerned with the building itself. Our architect actually took the drawing from the city's vision that they had, and that was the foundation for the drawing of our building. We even stated to the committee that we are not stuck on any one of the designs, and we would have worked, we would love to work closely with the city on the design of the building, as our business goes on inside of the walls. So I would love to work with the city on the design, what you would like to see, accents you'd like to see. We've already been pre-approved for $850,000 loan, have we get the building, so the finance isn't an issue. And I don't think there's anything better than you guys being able to help design it as well. So I, I didn't understand that concern. One of the most upsetting things was the scoring process.
Your time has expired.
I, well, I had to donate a time. I thought I'd get up to 10 minutes.
Who is going?
I, that's what they said in the meeting. I mean, I have a couple of people over there, so I said first. Sorry. Yeah, I have like 30 people.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you, you're going to take the time of all 30, max at 10?
No, 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 I know that. I know that. I'm.
And I think that the commission's concern, or the, the board's concern is that you speak for 10.
No, I just, I'm not actually going for 10. It's only a couple more minutes. No, I, I was very aware. I've read all of that as well, and that's why when I first stepped up here, I actually stated that I had some donated time. So, thank you. Hold on, I lost where I was. All right. So the scoring process was frustrating, as actually our competitor stated as well. There was even points where I quote, "How about 34? I like that number", end quote. Furthermore, we were supposed to receive extra points for being a local business. It was stated in page 17, section 23 of the RFP, that these preferences will be considered after the completion of the final rankings, and preferences will be applied to the amount of 5%. We did not receive these points in the final rankings. They actually went back and they did add it to the initial ranking, but they did not add them in the final ranking. And there was comments that, instead of making me feel like owning a local business was a positive thing, they more made it feel like it was a hindrance. And some of those comments, and I quote, "Your slides already show people using downtown, so what difference would it make?" And also, "Well, you're already an existing business, not a new one." So I didn't understand that, because in the RFP, it did state that we would get local business preference and actually be awarded points and advantages for being a local business. So, you know, that being said, I, I just strongly believe that there's nothing else that would increase the foot traffic like we can. And I do believe that the local businesses actually are the ones who stand the lose the most, because we bring minimum, you know, 14 to 20 people an hour, steady traffic, and as this gentleman stated, this is higher-income people in town. So, you know, I just please, please ask that you guys reconsider. I, I think it would be a large missed opportunity for what we can do for downtown, and all of their businesses would definitely be boosted. And again, we would work with you guys with the design. We're more than happy with that. So you guys get a, a big say in that, because again, we're, our businesses go on inside the walls. I've already talked with local businesses next door, Teddy. I spoke with Teddy. He's a, he's a great guy. He actually even agreed to let us use his lot to help speed the building process, so we could get it built after issuance of permits within six months, because he's willing to let us use his, his lot for minimal crane work, minimal truck work, concrete pumping and stuff like that, to actually ease the process, because then we can actually access the property from the west side of the property, which would not be able to be done without his permission. So we have all the local businesses' support behind us, and I just really hope that you reconsider, so that way they can benefit as well as us. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I'm not here for these businesses. I did not know about this business in Tarpon, so I found out we have a new, one that I didn't know about. I'm here to say, when they come up to speak at this podium, we need to have their business address, and we need to have their residence address, to know where they're, where they live. It's good for the city to have that. I've learned this for many years of sitting there, and when they come back to do research, it's good to know their home address, where they lay their head down at night, and where they have their. and where they have their business address to derive their living. So, please, let's start asking. When they give a business address, we need to have a residence address also. Thank you.
It's protection for the city.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anybody else?
Peter Lakus, 514 Ashland Avenue. Don't know the CrossFit business as far as your nature other than what I've heard here and some generalizations from what you've said is your stated intents. I don't know the designs of the buildings, and it appears that that is something that's flexible. But if you're looking at concepts to compare between the two, and nothing against Edward Jones or Mr. Lindahl and all that stuff, but they can put those offices pretty much anywhere in the CRA. This definitely has the potential for, one, your foot traffic. But as it's been stated, and you've had Mr. Fackless come up here talking about his running events and bringing all the runners to Tarpon Springs, remember? Anybody want to nod? Yes, do you remember? Yes. So, this definitely augments some of what is already downtown. So, if you're looking to weigh futuristic aspects of potential, I would say the CrossFit has more potential versus the other option you have currently now. Now, whether you decide you don't want either of them and want to go forward and have the gentleman and everybody else come back another time and redo it, that's your decision. But I do kind of have something I want to point out.
When did we acquire this property?
Mr. Delakis? Please state the question.
When did we acquire this property? In '06? Does the attorney have that information? Does the city manager have that information?
Are we relevant to the comment?
Well, it is relevant because I want to go, this is the CRA board. And I know this property came up to us, had to be around '06, at least 10, 11 years ago.
It was after that because I was first elected in '08, so it was after.
All right, so '08. All right, so nine years, maybe, going on 10, that the CRA has had this property. So, I just want to point out, as landlords and owners of this property you've had for 10 years and still trying to figure out what to do with it, you've got on your plate considering to purchase another property that you're not going to get the return on that you're talking about even on this. So, I know this is a separate issue here, but the point I'm making about the property down at the Sun Bay that you're considering to purchase, are we going to sit 10 years on that property too? Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, you're not one of the people donated their time, is it? Are you?
No, I couldn't donate.
Okay.
I like to use my own time. Good evening, my name is Lisa Collins and I live at 615 Pine Street, Tarpon Springs, just right up the road. I have a few comments because I'm a new CrossFit member, but I also have been a resident of Tarpon for many years. And I would like to talk about the foot traffic and the building up of Tarpon Avenue. You guys have done a really good job of bringing in businesses that provide activities for people in the evenings, restaurants, breweries. And I see that the CrossFit business would bring in some additional foot traffic in that area. I notice that when I attend on the weekends on events, sometimes there is not as much traffic on the weekends as there is during the week. So, having a center or a business that would provide some extra evening time and bringing people into that area is very important for our community. Because after, after 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, things can sometimes die down in there. I know the CrossFit Center has late night classes that go from 7:30 because that's the time I usually attend, and you're out of there at 8:30. So, going to have a meal after that would align perfectly with someone's schedule and/or having a cocktail or an adult beverage would also be a good choice. I am new to this whole system, but one of the things I observed from this meeting is the concern about the actual building. I would recommend, because this is our city and this is our main street, that you as a board would have control of the choice of what the building would look like and then decide how to place businesses within the building. I feel like if you release the control of the creation of the building to businesses, you might end up with another Dollar General per se that isn't necessarily fitting to the style of our town. That concerns me as a citizen of Tarpon, that the main street is very synced to the same themes. I also feel like that as a board, you guys deciding who's building the building, this is what the building is going to look like, offices, construction or whatever, and then bringing in the business that would fit inside the building, I think is a great idea. One last comment on CrossFit. It's a healthy, it's an athletic vibe, an athletic energy. And I feel that that's part of our city's niche. We have the Rotary Triathlons, we have several other triathlons that run through the area. We have the Arts and Crafts Festival. These are healthy, vibrant activities that bring young people and middle-aged people, any people that is looking for a healthy, active lifestyle. So, having some businesses in the main area that incorporate that same feel helps set a new vibe. I heard a lot about the history of sponge diving tonight, but I also feel like we're at the edge of a new history for Tarpon with new things that could be out. And being an athletic, healthy community, going green, being good on diet and exercise, those are things that are vital to the new generations, and that can also feed a lifeblood into our community too. So, I'd like to thank you for your time tonight and consider the CrossFit. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Holly Webb and I am a member of CrossFit Tarpon Springs. I don't want to duplicate any of the things that have been said as I value your time this evening, but I do feel that it's important to explain who we really are as I feel there's a misperception of who we are as a group. So, I want to take a few minutes to share this testimony with you. CrossFit is new life. CrossFit is self-esteem in a building, the little reversal of diabetes and obesity. It's finding strength when you thought you were broken. It's fuel for your soul and for your mind. Moms that are more fit to take care of their children, fathers who are not dying of heart disease, children learning healthy habits from the beginning, people who want to get out of bed in the morning, people like me. When I walked into CrossFit, it was my last hope and I wasn't sure that it wasn't going to be just another time that I wasn't going to fail. Sorry, this is very personal for me. Three months ago, just three months ago, I was 48 pounds heavier. I was insecure and I was bordering on depression. And I couldn't do the things I wanted to do because of my physical inability. All that has changed. It's no longer hope, this is my lifestyle. I sing in the kitchen and do squats in the gym. I laugh while I sweat. My life is better than it probably has ever been. I'm confident that I will reach my goals because of CrossFit and finding it. I was lucky enough to receive a scholarship through their program's First Steps to Fitness. This is something that they give back to the community. Because they have, they have a mission to create a better and healthier community, they run this program several times a year. And I'm proof here that it works and it's going to continue to work. Another member has been able to lose enough weight to finally get the knee replacement she desperately needed. Other members have been taken off their medicines because they're so healthy, they were making them ill. So much more. And we've found such, so many of us have found value in what CrossFit does for us. We've been able to become full-time members and find a way. Our gym welcomes everyone regardless of size or fitness level. There's something for someone of every type. What is it? It is, it's a family. And I want each one of you to think about your own family for a minute. How many of your own loved ones have been affected by diabetes, obesity, depression, heart disease? How many of you could benefit from that type of lifestyle change that we could bring to downtown? What we want for our families is ultimately what we should want for our community. We love our community. I could go on and I could tell you about the statistics and you've heard those tonight. CrossFit would be a successful fit. We know that we would make a huge economic impact for the rest of the downtown businesses. But what you need to know by approving CrossFit for the downtown location is that you're creating a stronger community that is more able, and I want to emphasize, more able, to invest in the downtown area. So, I ask you tonight, please, look at yourselves, look at your families, look at your community and choose what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. I live in Palm Harbor and I come over to this gym.
Sir, can you tell the board your name for the record, please?
Mark Burnight.
And your address, please?
4991 Lamb Bridge Court, Palm Harbor. I used to live in Tarpon Springs, but now I live over in the East Lake area. And I was introduced to this gym from a friend. I took the opportunity to come over and visit. Found something unique. I've been in the Tarpon Springs area, I actually used to live over here before I moved over there. And I've lived here almost 30 years in Tarpon Springs. And I've gone to a lot of different gyms and I think that you guys really are missing the bigger picture. There is an asset, a gym that's a jewel amongst gyms in the Tampa Bay area throughout the country. But my point being is that I come from Palm Harbor. I know a lot of members come from Palm Harbor, East Lake, Holiday, Newport Richey. They are driving traffic into Tarpon Springs. And when I do come over here, I go to Walmart, I go downtown, Sponge Docks, I do different things. So, you'd really, I mean, they're an asset and don't overlook it. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do you have none? Bring it back to the commission. Any discussion? I have, Commissioner Carr.
I could tell there's a lot of passion on both sides of this and I really thank you to both applicants that came forward on this and brought your applications. What is put before the board tonight? This is the first time I've seen anything about either properties. I haven't seen anything of the other gentleman's property either. So, we're not in any position to approve anything tonight for either property. We're given the recommendation to deny both of them and then ask for an RFP to be redone based on the stipulations that were proposed in the initial RFP. So, with that, I don't know how the board feels, but I don't feel that we're in the opportunity right now tonight to make a decision on one or the other. I do feel that it was not marketed well from our standpoint as a city and that I think we could have done a better job marketing it to other areas as I travel throughout the country or southeast and see downtowns that are revitalized with other businesses in downtown. I like the idea of the gym. It's a great idea, I think. It brings in young life in our downtown that doesn't really have a whole lot of young life. It's not a bad idea, but it's not a mixed use like it asks in the RFP. So, that's one concern I do have with the CrossFit. Do I think it's a good idea? Yeah, I do think it's a good idea. It sounds like with the Ed Jones proposal that there's some stipulations to that that doesn't fit again to what the RFP asked. So, I wouldn't be against looking at these applicants coming back through with the RFP and maybe tweaking or updating their proposals. If there's other businesses that want to join also. Six months seems pretty far down the road for me. I mean, it seems like we've got some active applicants and if we can market it to some other developers, if we can market it to some other people who have done similar things in other downtowns across the south or across Florida or Tampa Bay itself, that would be great as well to get a true impact of what this would be. But, but thanks again for you guys bringing forward what you brought forward. But right now, we're just not, I'm not in a position to make any recommendation on either of these properties because it's not what's been presented before us.
That was not a motion, was it?
No, it's discussion right now. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Carr?
Thank you. I have to echo some of the comments that Commissioner Carr has made. This is the first time that, that I'm seeing any designer, anything on a property which is just handed to me. The only thing we have in our backup is asking us to reject these two proposals. I love the idea of the CrossFit downtown with the, because how many people that this business will bring? And you're right, it'll bring, it'll help our local restaurants, our breweries, our local shops. This type of, this type of business would be, I feel, would be great for our downtown. The only issue I see is that there might be, there's concerns with, with the building and your actual plan. So, what I'd like to see is even both applicants come back and work with Ms. Lemmons because the RFP was very specific and, and that area of our community is very specific how, how we have to build down there and what you have to conform to. Because you would also have to go in front of the HPP board. And that's, you know, they're top and they are going to stick to guidelines and make sure that you conform to, to the area. So, and like, you know, like Commissioner Carr said, I mean, this is the first we're seeing anything on either property. So, are we allowed to see how they, how the board voted? You know, how they came up with their decision?
Yeah, you can see all that. Let me, let me just say something about this whole process and, you know, it's hard as government trying to do things such as just selling land, doing land. It's very hard because we've got restrictions going on. We tried to hold some kind of criteria for how we set this up. All this stuff was very difficult to do. What we tried to do in this process, and believe me, why we're asking you and I'm telling you, I'm going to look at this process again and I think there's some different ways to do it and try to stay legal. This was a legal person's way, you know it because you did it with the auditors. It may be a process where I shouldn't have put staff on the hook to do this and maybe you all need to be the committee looking to these things in the next round and doing it. We also have another piece of property, we did, the one on Ring Street, that we did a different process. The CRA and the processes is tough. But we had your vision of what you wanted for that property. We had two of them there, we had your vision. In the way the process and the way it's developed and the way the board tried to bring the two groups back and get there, it's not a thing where we want to sit there now and negotiate on the building. If, for instance, one proposal doesn't have anything that's going to meet the Heritage Preservation Board, that's not the time to do it now. It's when they present it, they already have the design with somebody who knows the Historical Preservation Board and that design is there to go with. If you want to decide to use half the property instead of the full property, again, we are trying to do and we tried in this process to look at all the things you, you wanted to do on it and why we're asking to reject these in this process. And believe me, before we do the next process and we don't need six months, we can sit and do it. You know, I plan to bring you another process to do this with and you'll prove and see. But with either of these two, I don't think we can go with them now because we don't want to be negotiating how you do your building by HPP rules. We don't want to be negotiating that. That should be in the proposal when it comes to either this staff or this board as the judges or whoever it comes to. All that stuff needs to be done in there now. That's why, you know, we're asking to reject these proposals and this procedure that we use to try to That's why, you know, we're asking to reject these proposals and this procedure that we use to try to make things legal. We come back to you with a procedure that you're comfortable with. And then, again, both these, you know, both these groups kind of know what you want. But again, we're just trying to relay what you want. It's what this board wants. We're trying to bring to you what your board wants. And we kind of put staff and, you know, we put the ratings staff. Whoever was on this board, you know, we're kind of putting them at odds. Not trying to look at their standards of what this committee tried to do, but looking at your standards, what you've talked about this property for years and years and years. If those criteria change, that's fine. Then you may ultimately be the one who need to make that. And you need to be that committee that reviews these proposals and do that. And you need to look at them. In that process where you're like the internal auditor, then you'll look at them, you'll look at designs, you'll look at all that and you bring that back. And that's something what I may bring back to you to look at after I hit with attorney. We look at the CRA laws again. We look at the purchasing laws and all the different things we had to look at to try to bring something that's not done in many cities. There's not many models to go do this by. But because ultimately it gets to the point where staff didn't do this, staff with the points. We didn't mark, I disagree, we didn't mark. If there's any concept from anybody saying, "We didn't try to market this thing and go with it." We've been trying every way with everybody who's come in here to try to point to that property and to market them. We brought in the Coca-Lacas. We brought in the other people who developed things around to try to do this property. So we have tried to put it out there and, you know, I'll be open to any way to market it. But we've marketed it pretty well and having people in there. So, but I do think we need to look at how we do things. Again, you'll need to decide in the process, what is your vision of what you want? It's not what staff wants to do the property. It's not what I want to do the property. It's what you as a board want to do. And the best way to do it is bring back to you a process to do it where if you want to be more involved, you're more involved in the evaluation. You're that committee that looks at the proposals and make those judgments. And then we make sure, although it was supposed to say, we need to share the applicants knows, you need to give us an architectural plan that meets the requirements that the Heritage Preservation Board is going to approve. You need to have mixed use. You need to have definitive lines where here is your space for this. Here is, here is your space for this. Here is this. In my mind, it's one, but if you want to do phasing, you can put phasing and if you want to ask for polar phasing, you can do it. So that is why to get started on this thing, and it doesn't have to take six months because I'm ready to sit down, get the process, bring it back to you, have it agree, have you agree with it and bring it forward. It's just, but we need to reject the biz tonight and get me started on that. And then both these groups can, can take whatever your vision is when we come back and say, "How are we going to do the thing? What is your vision again for these properties?" And then make it real specific what we're looking for in the bid proposals and then decide, "Do you want to actually do the process of doing it or do you want a staff group to do it?" And you make that decision to do. But to not have this thing drag and go on, I think you need to reject the proposals tonight and us getting started on that process.
Well, what I'd like to see tonight is, like I said, this is the first time we're seeing anything about one property. We haven't seen anything on the other is if we reject this tonight and we put a timeline like three months that if they work, these applicants work with staff within the next three months if this comes back to us. Or it could go through the process again and one of them can get approved. Wouldn't necessarily even come back to us, but I think three months is, I think is more than sufficient time. I think six months is ridiculous.
Again, the six months was just in there to do the marketing that you're talking. We can bring you back a new process. And again, as far as my suggestions go now is in this next project, when we go out to the bid again and we get this board to put the exact criteria of what they're looking for in the board. You know, I suggested this board be on the panel to do the things and you look at all those aspects and you approve or just approve which one you want.
Thank you, Mr. Licorice. When we approved the special area plan and we actually gave direction to the staff, to Mr. Licorice, what the criteria will be. We told him that we want to have mixed uses, retail, office and residential. That was the direction we gave him. Based on the direction we gave him, he came back to us and he says, "Reject this because it doesn't meet the criteria that we gave him." I like both businesses. Ed Jones, I think is very nice design and Mr. Hoffman, I have the most respect for him as an architect. He did many projects in Tarpon Springs and they're all beautiful. But he was not quite there. He was utilizing 50%, of the property. The other 50% it was maybe in the future or maybe not. The CrossFit, on the other hand, is, it's very good business because I love to workout. I've been working out all my life. I think it's going to be great to have something like that. But that doesn't fit the criteria that we gave Mr. Licorice. We, Mr. Delagoz had a very good point. We have this property close to eight years now. We haven't done anything. Of course, the economic conditions now are much better than they were before. And I think now we have a better chance to find a better use. The other concern that I have with the CrossFit, even though that I think it's going to be great to have it, but what happens if they decide they're going to leave? That's, we're not going to have mixed uses anymore. It's going to be a gym. So we have to find another person, another company to utilize that as a gym. So that's a concern that we're going to have. Again, for Mr. Licorice, it's not fair to criticize or to think that we would not get what we asked for because we did. We actually gave him direction based on the mixed uses, based on the special plan, special area plan that we worked very hard to get that for the downtown area. And I know Commissioner Kikka and I worked on that in the past. So based on that, I'll recommend, I will support the recommendation of the staff to reject that and bring it back and Mr. Licorice will give us, and he will bring us another procedure on how to do this. And I'm not feeling, I think we can actually be the judges just like we did in when we selected the auditors. We can do that as well. That's going to make it easier for the staff. We can do that. I don't have a problem with that. So that's my point. Commission Seaver.
Yes, this is difficult. I love your passion and fitness and I know that you'd bring a lot of foot traffic. But we're talking about this RFP. We didn't have anything in front of us tonight. Even Mr. Hoffman's plan, which sounds great. You talked about it fitting into downtown. You would have to, with both plans, fit in and go in front of the Historic Preservation Board. So that's, that's not an option. That's, that's something you'd have to do. But I agree. I don't know why we would have to wait six months. I think this is something, we haven't had anybody come to us with any plans for so many years and now we have two potential businesses. So I wouldn't want to wait six months. I think we need to move on this and maybe we should look back, look at the RFP and say some changes need to be made. And we should be included in a decision because.
I can bring that back to you before the holidays. So I can bring you back probably in one of the December meetings.
I think that's, that's the best thing to do because we don't, we haven't seen the plans. We really were not included in the process and I think that we need to be so we can make the best decision. I like the mixed use. I mean, that was one thing that we really have wanted downtown. So, but let's not wait. Yes.
I need a motion.
Motion to postpone or to reject the plan for right now.
Do I have a second?
Can we add to that? I'd like to add to the motion some of the specifics that the city manager is talking about. Bringing it back within a certain period of time involving the applicants. Is it going to go back to opening for rebid for additional applicants? I mean, what's the question?
What I'm going to bring you back is a new process and a new, and I want to bring it to, I don't think, I can make the first, the meetings are back to back. So probably the second meeting of December, I want to bring you back a new process where we go out for the proposals again where you let us know before we put those proposals out, anything else you want to add or change from what's before. And as of right now, I mean, I may bring you another recommendation because I'm really going to look at the rules and do it. But as of right now, I'd recommend that you would be the committee doing it. But what I wanted to bring you and have you approve for the holidays, before the holidays, so we can get it out and get going on a new process is a process for resubmit a bids from these groups and other groups where you look at and to review, you know, in a time period after the first of the year, so you can make a decision on that. And I'll bring that process which you'll decide on, you'll put the criteria and you'll decide who's going to do it. And I'll bring that to you the second meeting of December.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I'll second the motion. I think it's also a good idea for the CRA board to review the applications also and if there's some type of scoring mechanism. Because at that point, we fully understand as the board what we're voting on. We've seen the full plan and we can evaluate it better instead of just looking at this over a two-day weekend and not having any other plans to review. So, sorry to the applicants that you guys didn't get your final answer tonight, but this is something that.
So the motion is to reject and we have first, a second.
Can I make just one other comment? I want to thank everybody for being here and being so patient and that's the best behaved little baby I've ever seen. Just adorable.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Kikka?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Chair Alhuzis.
Yes, thank you. And thank you all for being here tonight. Well, that concludes the CRA agenda tonight.
We're still in our meeting.
All right, we still have a meeting here. Sir, we still have a meeting here. Okay.
You're welcome to stay if you want.
We're now going to staff comments.
No, no comments, ma'am. Thank you.
City Attorney?
No comments.
City Manager?
Just thank the voters of Pinellas County. Probably one of the biggest votes you could ever imagine was tonight with the passing of the penny for Pinellas by over 80%.
Wow.
I cannot imagine this county or this city existing from 2020 to 2030 without the penny of Pinellas. You will see, you would have seen a greatly different Tarpon Springs and a greatly different. That money is so necessary from public safety to the parks to making this community, you know, together. And I'm glad, you know, overwhelming. You don't get 80% usually in this county on anything. You did on keeping the police here and not doing like the need to get rid of the police and you get it on Penny for Pinellas. Again, when we start getting into the next budget cycle, start talking about the next, now we can start talking about the penny from 2020, 2025, the next five-year plan, the penny, all the different things and projects we can get in. I just can't imagine. And again, thanks to the voters, thanks to my staff, thanks to the commissioners, mayor commissioners. Because I know everywhere we were, we made sure this last three, four months, everywhere we went, whether it was the old timers that I was, that we were invited to, whether it's Rotary, whether it's the mobile home parks, we talked about the value of the penny. The county did their job of promoting the committee and the city came back and give it. So one of the biggest votes that you've had here is the success of that penny. And we have proved during the 20 years of the penny, we approved and you can see in this community that we have put the penny to good use. And we're going to have a lot of good uses to put that penny towards for the next 10 years. So thank you to the voters for that.
Great news. Thank you. Mr. Licorice, you want to tell us about the November 12, the cleanup that is going to take place?
Yes, now we can get ready as we're finishing up. We've still got tiny, tiny pockets of the fencing and pockets of some brush. Although some of it probably snuck out after we already picked up one load, but we're working on those. But now all those items for the, all furniture and stuff, some of it's already out there from the other ones. So we encourage everybody, we're going to be getting the word out to put that stuff out for the collection Sunday. And hopefully with the collection of that material and us finishing up this week and next. Again, if any of you here have any pockets that are still, I've got a couple of calls today. Again, some are, some are multiple ones we picked up and going back on. So we want to encourage people now, you go by the regular method of how you use your yard waste. Don't do those piles again, but we're still going around for the fencing and other materials. We're almost there. We had crews out today trying to look where those pockets are. Again, any help from social media, if you get us some places we might have missed. So that cleanup's going. We can get the furniture and those items that you see out there. Hope we can get those picked up Sunday and almost get this town back to normal after.
Yes, I think our people did a great job. Very thankful for that. Yes.
Still got crews that work in weekends. They've worked weekends ever since the storm, so they'll be glad to have a weekend off soon.
David S. Clark?
No comment.
No comment? Commission Kikka?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to comment this Thursday from November 9th from 6 to 8, there will be a meeting here in this room regarding solar. So I encourage you to come out and learn more about it and what we'll be offering here in our community. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Panther?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank Commissioner Delakas, former commissioner, for bringing up the problem with PSTA or the observation. I had my first board meeting about two weeks ago. Definitely is different than how we do things here in Tarpon Springs to be polite. And I have a call, since budget numbers are obviously kind of my thing. I have a call tomorrow with the CFO to get ahold, to get my hands on their budget and their reserves and their operating account. What I saw at the meeting mildly scared me. And then I have my one-on-one with Brad Miller, the chairman, on December, I think it's 11. And were you, was it today, was the transit as golden mayor? Was that today?
No, it's not. I was going to talk about that. November 8.
November 8, yes. Okay, yeah. That'd be tomorrow then.
Yes, tomorrow.
Yeah, I won't be able to make it, but I know you're going to be representing well for, for Tarpon Springs. So, Peter, if you'll get with me separately about that issue, especially with the routes. If there's a route not working well in North County, because I don't know anything about the buses, so, okay, nothing. So if you can get, just get, just get with me on that and I will look, 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 look into that. I'm also, I need guidance from the city attorney moving forward about how I can be involved in this Forbes property process. So long as Rich is an applicant, you know, you know, what can I do? What can I do? Because, you know, I agree with a lot of things though said tonight, but am I allowed to? You know, if Mark brings forward a different process to propose to how will we review applications? You know, am I allowed to be, to be part of that? I'd like to be, but I want to be in accordance with the law. So I'd like some written guidance on, you know, how I move forward with that. Obviously, if he drops, if he drops out, then it's a no-brainer. But assuming he stays in, you know, I need, I need to know what I can be a part of and what I can't.
Am I correct? Right now the slate's clear because all bids were rejected. So all that is off right now.
Yeah, I agree. Absolutely. Right now we're starting from zero. And so if we get put into this posture again, we'll look at it again and see what certainly happened to answer those questions.
As much as I want to be involved, I have so many opinions that I just kept to myself tonight. I obviously want to err on the side of caution.
But if you would follow it up in writing, but like I said, just follow up in writing. But as far with you rejecting all the bids tonight, that process is ending. So your conflict.
If I could have that just via email to my city account, that's sufficient.
One case somebody comes back and claims later, you need that.
We know how some things happen.
Since we started off from the beginning, he should be able to be part of the process that we are going to step, am I right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yes. He had a voting conflict tonight based on, based on the conflict under chapter 112. At present, you have no, there's no conflict because presently there is nothing to decide. So as we get into that posture again, we'll revisit it.
And that's it. Thank you.
Commission Carr?
No comment.
I have several comments. I have meant to bring this up earlier, but I got an invitation from New York, from the mayor to attend that Cities Thrive conference again that I attended last year about mental health. I can't make it, but I think it's important that we have representation. I haven't talked to Robin about this or it's a piece for Tarpon. But I think because we were the first city in the USA to be a trauma-informed community and we brought attention to ourselves into Tarpon Springs. It cost, I think, $1,100 for me to go and then I got $500 back from New York. So it wasn't a very expensive trip and yet I thought, I think it was very valuable. And I know that we want to do more with Peace for Tarpon and this is a follow-up to last year's meeting and what we've done since last year and other cities that participated. The panel was, we took a lot of preparation. Wasn't just going there and talking about. Uh, the panel was um, it took a lot of preparation. Wasn't just going there and talking about peace for Tarpon. Um, so whoever goes needs needs to know uh, what's going on with peace, peace for Tarpon and 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 be able to participate in a panel uh, with four or five other people. So I was going to see what you all thought about maybe inviting or asking Robin to to go and we uh, or Wendy or somebody from Peace for Tarpon and we help um, partner in that process with
When is that going to take place?
It's like the fourth and fifth of December. I know. So it's coming up quick and I haven't responded to them, but I just thought I'd bring it up. I I think it's it's important that we still participate, but I I can't do it.
Robin going anywhere or?
Well, I haven't even talked to her about it. I just said that I No, I went. I went last year. No. Uh, it was, last year was the first year that they had this uh,
And they really wanted the city. They wanted the aspect from the city last year.
Right. And and they want to follow up from the city again, but I don't know who on this board.
Robin would be the most knowledgeable person to get.
Well, yeah, that's why if I don't go, even though I've been involved with Peace for Tarpon and I'm, my background is in mental health, that's why I went last year. Um, but you know, I think it'd be important for somebody to represent Peace for Tarpon or the city. Uh, so that was something I wanted to talk about and see how you all felt. So um, anyway, the next thing is that I went to the bathrooms, the new bathrooms at the Marina and Craig Park and they're beautiful.
Um, yeah, she made me go in the bathrooms to check.
Yeah, uh,
Very nice.
Where's my kscutus? Uh, Craig Park is, they did a beautiful job in the Marina too and and doing it in house saved thousands of dollars. So uh, I want to applaud the city for what a wonderful job they did on those bathrooms, both at the Marina and at Craig Park.
The menswear looked good.
Yeah. And even the the boater's bathroom, they unlocked it so I could go in there, the shower. I mean, I'd like a bathroom like that at my house. I mean, it was beautiful. So um, I just want to commend the city on that. And finally, there is a three day seafood festival. It's the thirtieth annual seafood festival on the docks uh, this weekend. A lot of people attend that that event and it's good for all of our businesses um, in Tarpon Springs, not only on the docks, but the whole city. So I want to encourage people to come out for that three day seafood festival. And then uh, next weekend on the eighteenth is a um, Stone Crab Festival at Craig Park, uh, that the Rotary sponsoring. So I just wanted to put that out there. And then about the buses, I didn't know that they changed that because I know Peter, that when I've ridden the jolly trolley, I've had to to pay and put it in a you know, it was, it had to be exact change, but I had to put it in their little container or whatever. So I was surprised by that statement tonight, but anyway. Oh, okay. So yeah, it's, it'll be interesting to find out how that's working now. Okay. All right. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, I've got several things I'd like to say that start off with the November tenth. Friday, November tenth is the Marine Corps birthday and I'd like to wish happy birthday to all the Marines. And I want to thank them for their service to our country. Tomorrow, November eighth, at ten thirty A M, the P S T A and the Florida Public Transportation Association, they're going to have an event. And it's going to be targeting the um, uh, the seniors transportation and um, I'd like to invite every, all the seniors to be there. And uh, I'm very happy that our vice mayor is going to be our representative down to the um, P S T A and I'm hoping that he be uh, able to help us with the senior transportation. And I will be talking about that tomorrow with them, by the way. On November uh, twelve through the fifteen, the vice mayor and the staff from the city of uh, Payo, the um, country of Ecuador will be visiting Tarpon Springs. They're going to be looking our uh, state of the art water plant and our sewer plant and hoping that they will get ideas to build their uh, facilities down there in uh, Central America. So I encourage and I'd like to invite all of you to come to the different events that we have and I hope you got the schedule already. So um, uh, I'd like to uh, remind everyone that our next B O C meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, November fourteenth. We changed the date due to the upcoming holidays. So I'll see you all next week and good night. Well, that concludes the regular session meeting and it's adjourned at ten oh two.
It's actually the CRA meeting. Good point. That's harsh. It's safe in my world.
Well, Jay, what do you need to use up plan, huh? You never know, right?
Did I? I have one issue. Because you should do, when you get done with the regular session, you go into CRA. You should do your board and staff comments in the regular session, not CRA. As the commissioners.
Oh, you're not going to be?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you know, they're going to be here Monday.
She bolted.
I felt protected. Thank you, buddy. I knew if you heard the rounds going, you'd be someone's place. And by the way, man, what coach you say you were a star and I did you.
Are you? I'm sorry.
I need to get with Irene, you guys on the trip.
Yes.
Okay.
No problem.
Mayor, did you sign the stuff in there?